Thank you, everyone. Welcome, everyone, to tonight's Ordinary Council meeting. I am the Mayor, councillor Georgina Papafolio. Welcome to the first Ordinary Council meeting for 2020. I declare this meeting open at 7pm. In the unlikely event of an emergency, please follow the direction of council officers and the emergency procedures on the wall near the door. I would like to note that I've provided approval for the journalists from the Brimbank Star Weekly and Channel 31 to audio and video record the meeting. Members of the gallery are not intended to be recorded, but please notify a council officer if you have any concerns. Please note, the purpose of the council meeting is to conduct the business of council in an orderly and constructive manner. While council obviously welcomes community interest in council meetings, a council meeting is not a community consultation forum. Members of the public are not able to address council at this meeting tonight or disrupt proceedings. Please stand for the acknowledgement of country. On behalf of Brimbank City Council, I'd like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of this land, the Wurundjeri people, and pay our respects to elders, past, present, and emerging. You may sit down, councillors remain standing. As the council, we will act in the best interests of the Brimbank community and consider the immediate and long-term impacts of our decisions. We will make these decisions fairly and without bias. We will uphold all of our obligations under the laws of Victoria and council's local laws, and will act in accordance with our code of conduct. Thank you. Okay, item three, apologies or leave of absence. Councillor Headitch has requested a leave of absence from the 23rd of March to the 5th of April 2020, inclusive. May I have a mover of a motion to approve this leave of absence? Councillor Congreve?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, moved as per the business papers.
Thank you. Could I please have a seconda? Councillor Tarkos? I will put this motion to the vote. All in favour, against, carried. Item four, disclosure of conflicts of interest. Are there any declarations of conflicts of interest?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have a declaration of conflict of interest. I'd like to declare a conflict of interest at item 12.8a2, as I have an indirect interest by matter of conflict in duty. And when it comes to this time, Madam Mayor, I will seek to split the report to allow me to participate in the debate for that section.
That's fine, thank you, Councillor Congreve. Item five, designation of items as confidential. There are eight items to be designated as confidential this evening. May I have a mover of a motion to designate these items as confidential? Councillor Borg?
I'll move the motion as per business papers.
Thank you. May I have a seconda? Councillor Trung? I will put the motion to the vote. All those in favour, against, carried. Item six, confirmation of minutes of previous meetings. May I have a mover for a motion to confirm the minutes of the previous council meeting? Councillor Goodrich? Could you please read the motion?
... that the minutes of the Ordinary Council meeting, number 565, held on 2/10/2019, in the Australian Parliament.
Thank you. Councillor David? Seconda, thank you. I will put the motion to the vote. All those in favour, against, carried. Item seven, which is condolences. There are two items of condolences this evening. 7.1, passing of the Honourable John Kane. May I have a mover of the motion of condolence for the Honourable John Kane? Councillor David? Would you like to move the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I must move the motion of the passing of the leave. Premier of Victoria, Honourable John Kane.
Thank you. Could I please have a seconda? Councillor Tarkos? Thank you. Councillor David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On behalf of Brimbank City Council, our deepest condolences extended to Nancy Kane and family of the passing of her husband, Mr John Kane. John was the 45th Premier of Victoria in office from 1982 to 1990 as leader of the Labor Party, holding membership for 70 years, and will go on to be to hold Mandura for 16 years, as well as being premier, he stayed Attorney General for 18 months. We thank John for his work to change to the Freedom of Information legislation, liberalise shop trading legal and prostitution laws, tobacco and gun control, the National Training Centre, work here, and the TAC legal and prostitution laws, keeping the AFL ground fire at the MCG, and his firm opposition to introduction of casino and pocket machines. John is survived by his wife of 64 years and three children, 10 grandchildren and five great-grandchildren. Madam Mayor, I had the privilege of meeting the annoying delayed premier for quite a number of times, and we met over the years. The last time I've heard him was on this 2016, where the Labor Party does invite the live members at the Queen's Hall for a sandwich and a few other acknowledges for each other. So that was the last time I saw Mr Kane. And of course, I remember his very moral character, a very good gentleman indeed. On behalf of council, Madam Mayor, I thank John for his inspiring work that has shaped Victoria and provided so much benefit to Brimbank as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor David. Councillor Tarkos, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would also like to say that John Kane was the longest-serving premier for Victoria. He will be remembered as a principled reformist leader who helped transform the state into a cultural and sporting hub that it is today. Some of John Kane's reforms included introduction of the important OCH health and safety laws and establishment of the Transport Accident Commission. He was described by many of his peers as a politician of the highest integrity that fought for public interest and workers' rights. His passing is a great loss to Victorian politics, our condolences to his wife Nancy, his children Joanne, John, and James. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone? Councillor Headitch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to echo the points that have been made by Councillor David and Councillor Tarkos, and also say that I didn't meet John Kane, but I came to work in Melbourne in 1983 in the Victorian public sector. And I experienced firsthand the impact of John Kane and the integrity he had and the principled approach she took to, I guess, freedom of information issues, to public interest issues, and workers' rights issues, and so on, and it was inspiring. And I think that culture he set back then is a culture that has lived on for a while, but is starting to fray again now. And we need new John Kanes to come forward. We need the next generations to step up with that principled approach and to take the lead on, I guess, setting examples around how we do this better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, I'll put this motion to the vote. All in favour, against, carried. Thank you. 7.2 is about people who were affected by the bushfires. I would like us to take a minute's silence in honour of those affected by the recent bushfires, so could I ask everyone to stand up, please? Thank you. Thank you, everyone. May I have a mover of the motion of condolence for people affected by the recent bushfires? Councillor Farm?
Yes, I would like to move the motion that council extends the condolences to people affected by the recent bushfire. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I please have a seconda? Councillor Headitch? Would the mover like to speak?
On behalf of Brimbank City Council, our deepest condolences are extended to the families of those lost in the recent bushfires. The fires in eastern and north-eastern part of our state have led to terrible loss of life, property, livestock, and wildlife. On behalf of the Brimbank community, Brimbank Council donated $10,000 to the Giftlands Emergency Relief Fund. The Giftlands Emergency Relief Fund is the registered charity that provides immediate short-term fund to gift lenders affected by natural disaster events. 100% of donated fund will go directly to the community in need. Brimbank Council will absorb any event permit fee for community groups and community members who wish to hold fundraising events, supporting registered terrorist and non-for-profit organisations that provide bushfire relief funding or activities. Council help a community movie and barbecue on Australia Day night. At Kevin Gullahan Gardens, we provide an opportunity for gold coin donation for bushfire relief. Council has also offered practical and resource assistance to the affected shires, and is willing to help in any way it can.
Thank you, Councillor Farm. Councillor Headitch, would you like to say a few words?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, I support everything that councillor Farm has said. I think the extension of condolences to all the communities affected is a significant thing when it's aggregated together with everything that's done in other communities as well like this. I know that around the Brimbank community, there's been an enormous effort going on across community groups and across different parts of our community to raise funds. And even just last Friday night, we know the Sunshine Lions had an event where they raised $20,000, and I congratulate them, but there's many others who have done the same thing, and I don't want to single anyone out for people of praise. I think it's something that the whole community has got in and got behind. Council also has done its piece of work in this space, and we thank council for doing that. Again, though, the point of this one is to extend our condolences to the people affected, and I think we can do that best by visiting them and spending money in their communities and so on. So I look forward to doing some of that in the weeks and months ahead.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, I'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour, against, carried. Item eight, congratulations. There are two items of congratulations this evening. 8.1 is the bushfire relief. May I have a mover of a motion of congratulations for the Brimbank individuals and groups involved in bushfire relief efforts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move the motion to congratulate all Brimbank individuals and groups involved in the bushfire relief efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Tarkos. Do I have a seconda? Councillor Borg? Councillor Tarkos, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's fitting that, going on from what John just said, that we congratulate all involved in the fundraising, Brimbank staff, community groups, and individuals involved in the bushfire relief effort over the last few months. As part of its relief support, Brimbank Council has also collected donations at community and civic centres and libraries. Brimbank Council has also offered practical and resource assistance to the affected shires as per mention. I personally would like to take this opportunity to thank the following groups and individuals in my own ward and community who played a valued role in assisting at a grassroots level, and thank them. The Wans Group, which was run by Melissa Juzwa, was a group of over 90 locals that just got together within a week, included myself and councillor Judichay. Thank you for giving up your time, helped to put together 1,247 emergency packs for the bushfire-affected area. Keelaw Park Cricket Club collected and delivered 543 slabs of water, that equates to 12,860 bottles. Kialba Green Gully Cricket Club ran a community fundraiser. Again, I was collecting on the tin that day with councillor Judichay, and we raised $6,300. Ferguson Pleuré in Keelaw collected $1,000. And the Kwangmend Temple at the St Albans Lunar Festival, thank you to all those volunteers, they raised $20,000 on that day. Saintside Bicycle Shop in St Albans raised $9,000 from the sale of special edition Saintside t-shirts online. A local student at Keelaw Downs College put together 10 back-to-school kits for children whose parents were probably so upset with what's going on to prepare them for back-to-school. And if I've missed anyone, I'm really sorry, but all I can say is thank you from the bottom of our hearts for your contribution, big or small. Even though our communities are small, we have big hearts in tough times. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the seconda like to speak? Councillor Borg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The terrible tragedies that resorted from the bushfires brought out the best in our community, as councillor Tarkos mentioned, and I would also like to mention that overall throughout Brimbank, there are, and there were, and there still are, organisations and business people, even the common people, you know, at grassroots levels, who went out of their safety zone or comfort zone, so to speak, to take the initiatives, a number of initiatives, to find ways and means for fundraising and other ways to help the affected people and the environment. And I would also like to mention that I have come across children in Brimbank who have even given their pocket money and even their Christmas gifts and donations that they had in monetary terms to donate to the affected children. So thank you once again, and I would also like to extend my gratitude from members of the community to this council and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Wonderful effort by many in our community, so it's wonderful. All right, I will put the motion to the vote. All in favour, against, carried. 8.2, Medal of the Order of Australia Awards. May I have a mover of a motion of congratulations for recipients of Medal of the Order of Australia Awards?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the motion that council congratulates recipients of the Medal of the Order of Australia, whose work was recognised on Australia Day 2020.
Thank you. May I have a seconda? Councillor David? Would the mover like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank Reece Mags, who is from the Western Melbourne branch of the Order of Australia branch, for the Order of Australia. I just, he, sorry, he sent me an email around March last year saying that we don't actually recognise recipients here at Brimbank. Well, we recognise them, but we don't, you know, we don't officially recognise or celebrate. Yeah, that's the proper word. And so this year, we have five people who are all from Brimbank. So congratulations to all local recipients of the Medal of the Order of Australia, whose work was recognised on Australia Day 2020. Sunshine resident and artistic director of the Ill Bidgery Theatre Company, Rachel Mazza, was awarded a Member of the Order of Australia for significant service to performing arts. Musician John Loquicello from Hillside, receiving a Member of the Order of Australia for service to the performing arts. Managing director of Freestones Transport, Paul Freestone, who was also honoured with a Medal of the Order of Australia for his service to the road transport industry and to the community. Sunshine Community Brass Musical Director, Wayne Bowden, also received a Medal of the Order of Australia for his service to music. And lastly, to Gregory Higge from Khan Lee, received an Australian Fire Service Medal for 32 years' involvement in fire and emergency management, and he is currently the regional controller for North West Metro. Thank you all for your outstanding contributions.
Thank you. Would the seconda like to speak? No? Any other speakers? Okay. I'll put the motion to the vote. All in favour, against, carried. Item nine, public question time. We've now reached the part of the meeting for public questions. Just for anyone unaware, public questions are able to be received in writing by noon on the date of a council meeting. We are unable to accept any public questions from people in attendance on the night. If someone who has submitted a public question is unable to attend the meeting, we will make sure we respond in writing within five business days. Mr Sakurai, I understand we have received questions from the public this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The first question is from Mrs Gerger. Mrs Gerger, are you in attendance?
No.
No.
And I believe the second question is also from Mrs Gerger?
Mrs Gerger?
No.
Not in attendance.
So what we'll do is we'll send a response to Mrs Gerger directly.
The next question is from Mr Neilhead. Mr Head, are you in attendance? Doesn't appear that way, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we'll send a response to Mr Neilhead as well. And that is it for today. Put that aside. Okay, item 10, petitions. There are no petitions to be received this evening. Item 11, minutes or reports of special meetings or committees. May I have a mover for a motion to note the draft minutes of the Lead West Special Committee Meeting?
Madam Mayor, sorry, I have a question in relation to that item?
Yes.
Yes? I'm just, I just noticed that the report, the minutes of that meeting relates to October 2019. Just wondering why they're being tabled in a February meeting? Someone else? Just wondering what the delay is?
Through the chair, I was actually absent in October. However, I'm just assuming that by the time that they got through the system, it was too late for the December meeting. So I can follow up on that for you.
Okay, do I have a councillor who will move that? Report? Councillor?
Papers?
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Tarkos. Do I have a seconda? Councillor Headitch? Thank you. I will put the motion to the vote. All those in favour, against, carried. Item 12, officer reports. There are 24 officer reports for consideration by council tonight. 12.1, planning activity update and delegate decisions, December 2019 and January 2020. Could I ask Kelvin Walsh to briefly introduce this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a monthly report to council that provides a status of planning applications and trends in planning approvals within the city, and also provides council with advice on decisions made under delegations during December and January past. Council's asked to note this report.
Thank you. Are there any questions or points of clarification, councillors? Okay, is there a mover for this report? Councillor Lancashire? Do I have a seconda? Councillor Goodrich? Does anyone wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Lancashire?
Through you, Madam Chair. Certainly, this is a regular report we get, which shows the value of the work being processed at Brimbank, and again, from January 2019 of 26 million to January 2020 of 85 million. Again, this shows the strength of the development that's occurring in Brimbank, and obviously the hard work our planners are putting in to process that amount of work. This all translates again into jobs for our community, and it shows the confidence in our community. So thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm pleased to see this.
Thank you. Would the seconda like to speak to this report? No? Any other speakers? Councillor Headitch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just briefly, I note in the report that there have been seven planning appeals determined by VCAT. Of these, a number have been, I guess, approved by VCAT, a number have not been approved by VCAT. Our council position has been upheld, and there have been a couple of other different types of decisions made. For me, that represents the purpose of council doing its work here at the council table, that we make our own decisions based on our own judgements in accordance with the Brimbank Planning Scheme and Plan Melbourne, and we also do our assurance job on behalf of community. So it's encouraging to see that some of the decisions that we've been making are being supported, but others often are not supported for other reasons than we've been thinking about. But that's democracy at work, and it's good to see such a flavour coming through the VCAT appeal system.
Thank you. Councillor Headitch? Any other speakers? Councillor Congreve?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And again, just a comment in relation to the VCAT determinations, I picked that up as well. For me, there was one call-out in there, and it was the refusal to deliver a planning permit for 84 Power Street, and that that decision was overturned. I remember this item, as I'm sure many councillors do, it was a very emotional time in the chamber, and it was a decision that we as a council carefully considered at the time. And we refused the permit because we thought the impact on the local residents from this development was too significant. And it really just goes to show at the end of the day that council can make a decision, but it can be so easily overturned. So it's a really difficult position for us to be in, and I'm sure that it's incredibly frustrating for the residents who thought they might have been out of the woods with this development, but now find themselves back in that situation. As councillor Headitch said, I know there are a number of other decisions that were determined, some of them were in our favour, some of them weren't. And there's 13 items outstanding at VCAT at the moment, so I'm sure that our community will have great interest in some of those, and we will continue to watch this space and support our council staff where we can, who attend these hearings on behalf of our residents. So I can amend the report to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul, councillor Congreve. Anyone else? All right. I'll put this to a vote. Those in favour, against, carried. 12.2, planning compliance activity update from the 1st of October to the 31st of December 2019. Could I ask Kelvin again, Kelvin, to present the report? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council, this is a regular quarterly report to council, providing you with information on our compliance activity in relation to the Planning Environment Act and other associated planning acts. Um, and, uh, council again is asked to note the activity from first of October through to the thirty-first of December of last year.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? No, could I please have a mover? Councillor Congreve, a seconda? Councillor Lancashire, would the mover like to speak?
Yes, I would, thank you, Madam Mayor. And councillors might think it's a bit odd that Councillor Congreve would be moving a planning report, given it's probably not one of my favourite topics, but and it always makes it interesting reading this report, but this month it was, to say, an absolute joy for me to read. Over the past couple of years as a councillor, and I'm sure many of you have had the same experience, one of the biggest complaints that I've received, um, from my constituents relates to illegal brothels. And council will note a couple of years ago, we had a NOM that came through to investigate our options for managing them. And, and last year, this council made a decision to hire private investigators to do what we could on behalf of our residents and to stand by our residents. And I'm really pleased to say that we got results and that's detailed in this report. I'm pleased that the magistrate, in the first two cases that we've brought forwards towards prosecution, ruled in council and communities' favour. Hiring a private investigator was a risk. In fact, if I don't recall, the officer's recommendation at the time was not to proceed down that line. But we did it and councils, um, made a decision, ten votes to one, to pursue the private investigator route. I want to pass, um, my thanks on from one of the businesses who contacted me a couple of weeks ago to say that the premise next door had moved out and that their business is all the better for it and it has been a tremendous, um, relief for them and their staff to not have that operating next door. So I look forward to more of these, um, issues coming forward and for us to be able to pursue more of these. And, um, as I said, it was a joy to read, so I commend the report to council, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lancashire? No, any other comments? Okay, I'll put this to the vote, those in favour, against, carried. Item twelve point three, planning application, P eight seven nine forward slash two thousand and sixteen, for fifteen to nineteen Service Street, Sunshine. Kelvin, do you mind presenting this report, please?
Not at all, Madam Mayor. Um, uh, Madam Mayor and council, this is, uh, presents to you the assessment of the planning application as detailed by the mayor uh, for the site at fifteen to nineteen Service Street in Sunshine. Um, the officer assessment is attached, uh, to the report. And council are asked, or the officer recommendation is the council issue, uh, planning permit, P eight seven nine forward slash twenty sixteen, uh, for the development of the eleven-storey mixed-use building. Um, uh, with a ground floor, uh, retail and a hundred and twenty dwellings above, um, at fifteen to nineteen Service Street in Sunshine, subject to a range of conditions that are detailed at attachment five.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions or, um, points of clarification?
Madam Mayor, I wish to have a mover and alternative motion on this.
Do you have any questions for Mister Walsh? No, okay. Um, could I please have a mover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, as we know, we had this before us, uh, late that year, back in December. My, my motion? The, the council issues planning permit, P eight seven nine, struck twenty sixteen, for the development of the land, for an eleven-storey mixed-use building, including the development and use of eleven retail premises, a ground floor, and the development and use of a hundred and twenty dwellings above within special building overlay at fifteen and nineteen Service Street, Sunshine, subject to the conditions contained at attach five, with the following changes. Madam Mayor, all those added changes, uh, and, and conditions are on the screen as we speak. And my fellow councillors got a copy, uh, each hard copy of all of them, so that's my motion, thank you.
Do I have a seconda for the amended motion? Councillor Tarkos? Okay, would the mover like to speak?
Just very briefly, Madam Mayor, just to say that, um, I'd like to congratulate the, the developer and, and, and the applicant for listening to the councillor's, uh, um, uh, perhaps request in changes for the forthcoming building. Uh, and indeed, um, they did, they came back and together with our fellow, fellow, the, the officers. And I'd like to say, say thank you to the officers for working together with the developer to put all these changes together, which is, uh, it's all us, uh, previously by our fellow councillors here. And they complied quite well and I, I thank everyone concerned for working together to put this together, thank you.
Thank you, would the seconda like to speak?
Just briefly to, um, support what Councillor David said, but I also support it, uh, for the fact that it, uh, contributes, um, to the Sunshine public realm. It will offer seven affordable housing apartments, something our community in Brimbank is crying out for. Um, these apartments, uh, Madam Mayor, is, will have rents that will be kept at seventy percent of market value. Um, this is a real need that we have in our community and for this developer to be proactive in offering this, I think is a really positive, um, thing. It will have best practice ECD, uh, developer contributions of three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, which I feel could be, uh, spent on projects such as greening within the activity centre. Um, a hundred and ninety-seven car parks, which exceed the requirement of what they're expected. But more importantly, um, the recent announcements, including the Western Rail, um, Rail Plan on to in two thousand and eighteen and the Melbourne Airport Rail Link and Sunshine Super Hut Hub. These projects indicate that Sunshine will be expected to play an enhanced strategic role to the future of metropolitan Melbourne, where greater development intensity and scale will be needed to ensure that vision. This, in my mind, reflects exactly what that aspiration is and is contributing in a positive way. And I'm very, um, grateful that they worked with our officers to achieve that, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Tarkos, any other speakers? Yes, Madam Mayor. Councillor Goodrich?
Um, I wish to support my fellow councillors as well and Councillor David on his amended motion. Um, I think it's an excellent development for Sunshine, one of the best that I've seen for a very, very long time. And with all of the future investments that are happening in Sunshine, this does definitely signal that Sunshine is open for business. So we will be attracting a lot more investment through this, uh, passing of this development. I'm hoping that councillors will be supporting this, uh, development this evening. And I also thank the developer for his hard work in providing what council thinks, I think, a wonderful development to have in our city, thank you.
Thank you, any other speakers? Councillor Headitch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, I speak, I stand to speak against, uh, this particular one. Uh, I don't speak against it on the basis of the application and the, uh, matters that are coming before us as a responsible authority, considering, uh, the, uh, report that's been prepared by the officers. Um, I take the responsible authority, uh, role seriously and I congratulate the officers for the report they provided. My concern though is about, uh, the other side of the ledger where we have an assurance role as councillors on behalf of the community. As we said in our councillor commitment, taking that long-term view and, uh, thinking about the future. And for me, uh, this particular development, like many we'll see come forward in the future, uh, relies on, uh, the, uh, council picking up the, the issues of, uh, uh, environment, climate change and shade, uh, mitigation of heat island effect in the street. Uh, council will be called on to plant trees and to do all sorts of things to mitigate the heat from a building that is concrete, uh, metal cladding and with much glass. Uh, in this particular, uh, Brimbank Planning Scheme at the moment, we don't have any policy around heat island effect. We don't have any pos, policy around, uh, uh, sustainable streetscapes in activities centres and residential growth zones in particular. And we've just declared a climate emergency. So, uh, for me, I think, looking long-term, uh, we can't keep approving buildings like this without the supporting policy and frameworks around streetscape plantings and so on, that we're going to be putting beside these buildings to try and mitigate the heat that comes from the built form. Uh, in a warming environment, uh, it's, it's essential that we do. Uh, for me, uh, I want to see, uh, some of, some of these sorts of things in place, these policies in place when decisions come to council like this. So the councillors of the day can consider all of that in one bundle. At the moment, we're just dealing with the planning application under the responsible authority banner, through the planning, various planning scheme, uh, arrangements that we have to consider it. But we, we must be thinking long-term in this type of environment with a declaration of a climate emergency and the absolute heating we know and the impact on future generations, we have to be thinking of it. And that's my councillor assurance hat. So for me, I'm, uh, I'm seeing a, a building being put forward that has a whole range of really good features to it. But beside it, I see a, a huge gap around how we're going to deal with the heat effects of it and the potential combination of heat effects from a range of buildings that will be set up in this community in the time to come. So for that reason, I won't be voting for it.
Thank you. Councillor Congreve?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'd like to echo the comments of my fellow councillor Tarkos. And due to surrounding this development, I think this is a wonderful development for Sunshine. I've looked at the plans of the building and apart from some of the issues that the planners, our, our people have picked up, it's actually really, really good and the applicant has been working with us tremendously to try and bring it towards great results for, for us. Um, councillor Tarkos touched on Melbourne Airport Rail Link and, and Sunshine. We've been banging on about this for a while, but Sunshine is going to be the centre of Melbourne's west. And, um, these types of catalysts are really what brings those people in and inspires greater projects in the area. I think this is a really good thing for Sunshine. We have had no objections from the community in relation to this development, which is really telling for me that the people of Sunshine support it. I commend councillor Headitch on his comments and for standing up and talking about heat island effects and all those sorts of things. Um, I agree with it, I, I, I agree with exactly what you're saying, but under our responsible planning authority role, we cannot decline a permit because of a heat island effect. We can work to mitigate that, so we're going through that process now. Um, councillor Tarkos talked about all of the community benefit that this developer, developer provided. Um, and she talked about the affordable housing, she talked about the environmentally sustainable design, nearly four hundred K in developer contributions. And, um, I don't think she talked about the publicly accessible terrace for the community, but that's another addition in, in, as well as the excellence in architectural design, which I talked about before, which is set to move the standard in the area. Um, the other great thing and, um, which was really surprising for me is normally when we start talking about these developments, we're arguing about car parking and the provision of car parking, because ge, generally they want to discount that. In this issue, these developers are providing more than the base requirement, which is completely unusual and very welcome for this council. So I commend this to council, um, and, you know, I think it's going to be a great thing for Sunshine, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Congreve, any other speakers, Councillor Lancashire?
Not much left to say after all of those, um, comments, I think it covers a very wide array of things. Of course, the thing is that in terms of a transport super hub, um, as mentioned, uh, this is exactly where we should have, uh, intensive residential development of this type. Um, within the shopping centre, um, where people get access to all the shops and services and job opportunities. Um, this particular amended motion relates to seven dwellings of affordable housing, um, which is, uh, an excellent, uh, thing for, uh, the developer through Urbis and our staff who negotiated that. And that certainly, I reiterate the words, um, uh, congratulating the developer and our staff on negotiating that. Um, and, and certainly, um, I, I think with this type of, uh, development and the, particularly the hundred and twenty dwellings, we must remember that, that that's also adding to our housing stock in terms of, uh, helping affordability. So it's not just the seven, but it's a hundred and twenty that's being added. And it's, again, we just saw the figures of, um, the amount of money, um, being spent in, uh, Brimbank and in Sunshine, showing a, a vote of confidence, uh, for this municipality. So I reiterate, the comments have been made and, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, any other speakers? Okay, uh, councillor David, we've had one councillor speak, um, against the amended motion. We, you've got the right to reply.
Madam Mayor, I, in reply to this, councillor spoke about the, it's one of the better buildings that I've seen since I became a councillor. It's right in the heart of our city. I think as we go along, we're going to see similar type of buildings in our city and we welcome them all. We need development here in our city. And, uh, as I said earlier, congratulating the developer and his applicant. Uh, it was a wonderful gesture by him to listen to us because we are the community's voice and that's what the people are asking us to do. And, and indeed, they listened. And, and of course, as I said, um, these type of buildings, we're going to see, see them as we go along. And I, that's my feeling about it, yeah.
Thank you, councillor David. Okay, councillors, um, we are voting on the amended motion. All those in favour? Against, carried, thank you. Item number twelve point four, planning application, P two four zero forward slash two thousand and nineteen, for thirty-four Hall Street, Sunshine West. Mister Walsh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, this, um, report presents to council the assessment of the planning, uh, permit application uh, for five double-story dwellings at thirty-four, uh, Hall Street in, uh, Sunshine West against the provisions of the Brimbank Planning Scheme. Uh, and that assessment is attached to the report. Uh, the officer recommendation is the council issues a notice of decision to grant a permit uh, for the construction of the five double-story dwellings, subject to a range of conditions that are outlined at attach, attachment five to the, um, report.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? No, could I please have a mover?
Madam Mayor, I wish to move an alternative recommendation.
Okay, councillor David, could you state that, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, my motion, and I move that council resolves to refuse application, P two hundred and forty, struck twenty nineteen, for the construction of five double-story dwellings on the line of thirty-four Hall Street, Sunshine West, on the following grounds. One, the scale of the proposed development is not in keeping with the surrounding streetscape, streetscape and with the detrimental impact on the neighbourhood character. The front setback of the proposed development to Hall Street does not comply with the standard B six and cross fifty-five of the Brimbank Planning Scheme. And three, the development will have a significant impact on the surrounding road networking capacity of on-street car parking. Four, the additional, the additional crossover, uh, crossovers along Eva Street would compromise the safety of the surrounding area.
Through the chair, uh, there's just one missing on.
Yes, we've just realised that, yeah. Okay. Okay, do I have a seconda for the alternate motion? Councillor Headitch? Uh, councillor David, would you like to speak to the amend, uh, alternate motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we, I asked a couple of questions, uh, last time we had the, the planning, uh, meeting, um, about cars, cars that travelling through Hall Street due to the morning and afternoon pickup and delivering the kids at school, I'm referring to St Paul's and that of Marion College. Um, also is in reference to what I read earlier. Um, the south side is quite openly looking at it is really good. But watching or perhaps the west part of the next, next door to the building, the, the proposed building is number thirty-two, Hall Street. They won't be seeing any morning sun at all. Um, it's overshadowing and all these things and I, I believe it's, um, it'll change the character of, of that area. It's mainly all brick-and-near buildings, uh, single-story buildings. So, uh, if we allow so many, it's too many, uh, to go on, will change the character completely.
Thank you. Councillor Headitch, would you like to speak to the alternate motion?
I would, Madam Mayor. Uh, I'd also like to add to what councillor David said, uh, the scale of the proposed, proposed development isn't in keeping with the surrounding streets, the surrounding streetscape and will detrimentally impact on the neighbourhood character. Uh, councillor David has mentioned it's a, it's a neighbourhood of single brick-and-near homes. Uh, it has a, uh, wide streets, but it has also a, a fairly intensive development and a very busy, uh, street network. Uh, the front setback of the, uh, of the proposed development, uh, does not comply with standard eighty-six of the Brimbank Planning Scheme. And the impact of this particular development, five, five dwellings, uh, will have a, a real impact on the surrounding road network and the capacity of on-street car parking. I went down today and had another look, um, it's, it's a block that, uh, will, I guess, uh, change that character immensely with the, uh, units facing out, uh, in a different direction to the current of, the current face of the, uh, house on the block. And, uh, it will, will have enormous impact on the, uh, I guess, the workings of that neighbourhood. Uh, there are additional crossovers that are required all along Eva Street and this will comprise, uh, will compromise. will compromise the safety of the surrounding sites and the surrounding areas. And for those reasons, I support the alternate motion.
Thank you. Any other speakers? councillor Goodrich?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I also wish to support councillor David in this alternate motion. I actually did go out there the other day myself and I imagined myself there and I know I say this all the time, but I couldn't imagine myself living next door to this development or in the area. 21 objections, that's a lot of objections from our community. And I think that our community has spoken to us quite clearly through the objections and also through the planning forum applications. And I thank them once again for coming to submit and helping us understand their situation. I've always been a councillor to advocate for proper planning. And whilst the previous application in Service Street was certainly for me proper planning because it's in the right place, I don't think that the residential areas of Sunshine outside of the Activity Centre are quite ready to have this gentrification happen. And five units, double-story units on 696 square metres, for me, it's not acceptable. And I know it meets all the standards and requirements, but for me, I'm sorry, I can't support it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Goodrich. councillor Lancashire?
First of all, Madam Mayor, I have a question relating to, could we have some elaboration on standard B6 as it is considered that it doesn't achieve?
Mr Walsh?
Yes, I'm sorry, if I may have a moment just to find it within the assessment.
councillor Lancashire?
I'm quite happy to make some my comments on that now.
In the meantime, okay.
If you don't mind, it might save some time. Through you, Madam Mayor. Look, simply, I appreciate that there is a lot of objections to this. However, and I'll make just some brief comments, it does comply with our policies, with our planning scheme requirements. And the officers have exercised their due diligence in going through it very carefully. I don't believe the comments here are substantial enough to refuse it. And I certainly won't be supporting it. We do need more, as I indicated with the other report. We need to make as much stride as we can with affordable housing. And young people need as many opportunities as possible. People need as many opportunities as possible to have accommodation provided. Now, we have our standards for that and I think this and all the other things that we do, like the Service Street one, all help to contribute to young people and affordable housing. So, and it meets with our policy. So that's my comments.
Thank you. Mr Walsh, have you got a response for this?
I do, and my apologies for the delay in getting to the page, which I point council to page 216 of the agenda papers, which is within the full assessment undertaken by the officers. In relation to B6, it's spelt out there. You'll see in the paragraph under the assessment that the proposal consists of front setback to Hall Street of 7.7 metres, which requires a variation of 0.1 metre, which is 100 mils, which is very, in the officer assessment, is very minor and consistent with the adjoining property and the surrounding area. And as such, the variation is sought and supported in the application assessment.
Thank you, Mr Walsh. councillor Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just reading recently that this year alone, there was a housing deficit of 20,000 houses. That's what I was reading. I think it's great to have a young person who wants to be a developer, develop this site. Very rarely do you see that kind of thing. And I think it's great that trying to contribute towards more housing. However, I think, in my opinion, five is too much. Especially you've got two three-betters and three that are two-bedroom. For me, it's not an issue of the neighbourhood character, okay, with that. The, you know, going over 100 mil doesn't make a difference. It does make a difference to when you're trying to do your formulas for open space and all that stuff. But for the development and seeing it, you won't see 100 mil. But yeah, I just think it's, you know, it was mentioned that it wasn't financially feasible to go for four units rather than five. I don't agree with that. I have seen four units, I've seen three, I've seen two, we've seen one. It's feasible, it can be done. But I just think especially in proximity of where it is and the line markings and the reduction of car space, I can just see this being a nightmare for residents. So I won't support it.
Thank you councillor Allen. Any other speakers? councillor Congrie?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've had a look at this development as well and have spent a lot of time going through this. And I wasn't present at the planning forum, but I have read through all the comments that came through and understand the sentiment that's coming through from the residents. I understand that we have a housing issue and I just looked at the median property prices in Sunshine and whoa, like you cannot get a house in Sunshine. The median unit price is 390,000. So it's interesting to me that the developer suggested it's not cost-effective to be able to do five and not four because potentially they're still selling them for 1.6 million bucks if they sell all of them at about 400,000. For me, if that was me and I was living next door and I lost my morning sun and I potentially had, you know, five separate residents and five separate families living next door to me, I would be pretty frustrated. So we have our requirements under the planning scheme and we are the responsible authority. I understand that and we take that seriously. But we also are the voice for the community and we need to be that voice and stand up and say, well, ethically, we don't think this is right or whatever the case is. So I don't support, I support this motion, which is to refuse the application. So thank you.
Any other speakers? Okay councillor David, you've got the right to reply because you've had one person, one councillor speak against your alternate motion.
Well, for me, Madam Mayor, I'd just like to thank my fellow councillors for speaking for my alternative motion here. And they all spoke with the same meaning. So I'll leave it to them. That's what I'm supporting.
Thank you. All right councillors, I'll put it to the vote for the alternate motion. Those in favour of the alternate motion? Against? Carried. You couldn't decide then? Okay, thank you. All right, item number 12.5. Planning application P843/2018 for 119 to 121 Cornwall Road, Sunshine. Mr Walsh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As per the previous item, this is a, presents to council an assessment against the Brimbank Planning Scheme for the proposed development at 119 to 121 Cornwall Road in Sunshine for the construction of seven dwellings. The officer recommendation is that council issues a notice of decision to grant a planning permit, subject to a range of conditions as detailed in attachment five to the report.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? None? Okay. I'll put, could I please have a mover? councillor Headitch? Could you move the motion please?
I was just thinking about it. Yes, I'd like to move the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second? councillor Trung? councillor Headitch, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This particular application has caused me grief. I have wrestled with it. I have gone around and checked it out, the area, a couple of, a number of times, not a couple of times, to try and familiarise myself with all the issues deeply. I understand the resident objections that came around neighbourhood character, around traffic, around garbage, around a range of issues affecting neighbours and so on. I also wrestled whether it was something that needed to be considered with just those in mind or did I need to consider this one on the basis of future as well? And the future as well is where I landed. The reason I'm standing tonight in support of this application is that my assessment is that the neighbourhood character of the street is mixed. It has a range of different types of buildings on both sides of the street, from double-story Georgian to double-story, very European, some very old flat developments, a number of homes that are basically traditional bungalows and so on. It has a real mixed character. And for me, I thought about that. I asked a lot of questions of the officers around the garbage schemes and the traffic and the parking and so on and all the matters that residents have raised. And those particular issues were all dealt with in my mind. This one has a particular design and approach, seven units on two blocks. It is an innovative one and it is an architectural design one that is a little bit different. But for me, that's where we're heading in Sunshine. We are looking for that point of difference. We are looking for a development of Sunshine with a modern innovative trend to it. And this one to me didn't, I guess, I didn't accept that it jeopardised the area so much at all in terms of neighbourhood character and those other factors I mentioned. For me, it made a new contribution. It refreshed. It didn't complement everything that's here, but it also, I thought, would add considerable value to everything that's here. So for me, I saw this one as one that should be supported and I put the motion to councillors for support. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Trung, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I fully support councillor Headitch. Because I think it's like we all know it's the Sunshine, it's the development and we need this modeling for the new members in the community to attend. And I think it's with dealing with three-bedroom, even they have the seven double-story, it's wearing up, it's more benefit. Even they have some of concern about the car park or the rapid removal. But all is being worked out and discussion. And I think that's one, we need, I support councillor Headitch because it's all the approval from the planning department. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? councillor Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to speak in support of this, of this development. I think it's great. I like it. You know, the double car spaces, you know, easy access in and out, which is not something you see. Especially in developments that are over two blocks. Usually it's one car in, one car out. So, and yeah, I like the design of it too. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just briefly as well, look, what I did like about this particular building or the plan is it has a twin, it's a double block, two blocks. And I liked the explanation by the applicant last time where he told us that the parking area, they'd be parking their cars in that way where they, when they come out onto Cornwall Road, they're facing the road itself. So that's brilliant. And when I see councillor, he, councillor Headitch supporting something, I'm happy to sign. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, I'll put the motion to the vote. Those in favour? Against? Carried. Thank you. 12.6, planning application P576/2019 for 63 Deramet Street, Albion. Mr Walsh, could you please brief us? Thank you.
Of course, Madam Mayor. This report presents to council the assessment of the planning application as you detailed, which is for five double-story dwellings and a reduction in visitor parking, car parking space at 63 Deramet Street in Albion. And this assessment was done against the Brimbank Planning Scheme. The officer recommendation in this instance is to issue a notice of decision to grant the planning permit, subject of course to a range of conditions as detailed at attachment five.
Thank you councillors. Any questions or clarifications? No? I'll ask for a mover please. councillor Headitch?
I'd like to move an alternate motion, Madam Mayor. The motion is that council resolves to refuse application P576/2019 for the construction of five double-story dwellings and a reduction in the visitor parking space at 63 Deramet Street Albion on the following grounds. They're on the screen. The proposal will have a detrimental effect, impact on the neighbourhood character of the area. The proposal doesn't comply with clause 5206 of the Brimbank Planning Scheme, provides insufficient car parking. The location of proposed crossovers along with vehicles entering and exiting the site include parking of a vehicle along the bend will impact on the safe operation of the local road network. The extent of hard surfaces and the number of dwellings proposed for the site results in an overdevelopment of the land and will increase the urban heat island effect. And five, the bulk and scale of the proposed development will have a detrimental impact on the amenity of the adjoining property to the west.
Thank you councillor Headitch. Do I have a second for the alternate motion? councillor David? councillor Headitch, would you like to speak to the alternate motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, we've been out to have a look at this particular site. We've had the planning forum, we've had a number of questions asked of the applicant and we've heard the resident objections. For me, this one still stands very solidly where it has been. Councillor has rejected it in the past. It's gone to VCAT, has been rejected there. It's come back with some changes. But for me, after travelling down there today and having another look at the way the five developments will face onto McClane Street and face a 40-metre-long blue steel colour bond fence as their outlook, this isn't neighbourhood character. This is a development of five units on a block that will comply in terms of space and so on. But it has, I guess, a real, will comply in terms of space and so on, but it has a real feel of overdevelopment to it. And the neighbourhood character itself will be impacted by it. The streetscape also in Deramet Street, this one doesn't particularly fit with that in my opinion. The proposal doesn't comply with 5206 of the Brimbank Planning Scheme because it takes away the intended car parking that was there previously on the verge of, we had a long conversation about previously. It's gone and I guess the car parking is less than what it was before. The location of the proposed crossovers with vehicles entering and exiting the site and the parking of vehicles along the road, particularly at the busiest times of the day when parents are taking their kids to school and people are parking there regularly, will have a really negative impact on the safe operation of the local road network. The heat island effect, we keep talking about it. I can't keep talking about it enough. We need policy around this. We haven't got it at the moment. We absolutely know from all the information we received from all around the traps that when you put together a lot of hard surface, a lot of building mass and you take trees out of blocks, someone was saying to me earlier today, what are we doing around the place at Albion? We're putting five on a block, we're putting three on a block, we're taking out all the trees in the backyards where kids can play. We haven't got enough parks, we haven't got that. We're carbonising the world. We're doing too much in these particular sites, which don't have the infrastructure in place to cope with it. Where are we going to put it? So for me, that extent of hard surfaces is a real issue. And the increasing of the urban heat island effect by the development we're doing over and over again around the city is a real concern. And we need policy. We need streetscape policy, we need urban heat island policy. We need all sorts of policies to overcome some of this. Climate change is real, it's going to happen. And, well, it is happening. The bulk and scale of the proposed development will also have a detrimental impact on the amenity of the adjoining property to the west. We've heard from the property owner, we've been there in previous visits and had a look at the impacts. We understand those. Some of those impacts, I think, can be mitigated. But there will be a definite impact on that particular person who will have five homes backing on to their property. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Headitch. councillor David, would you like? Thank you councillor Headish. councillor David, would you like to speak to this alternate motion?
Yes, I'd like to follow what councillor Headish said in this instance. If I remember rightly, I think this applicant came to us with three units at the very beginning. Then he changed it to five. We said no, he took us to VCAT. Came back now with supposed to be changes, but cannot change the block of land. This is my word. The block of land is situated as such, which got two corners, one on each side, and a very sharp sort of corner on the other side. Now, we spoke about overshadowing for many of times before. The, the house next door to, to that, behind McClain Street is really, is really perhaps you won't be seeing any sun at all in the morning. That's where it is. So it's overshadowing all the way through and it's so dangerous to having to, I'm referring to the block of land again. A very sharp corner as you're coming into McClain Street, entering Deramet Street. So it's been accidents there, not just there, but similar situations in the same street. So we don't want to have any, any serious accidents in the near future. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other speakers? councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to speak in against this alternate motion.
Okay.
Yeah, so to, to support this, but not to support the alternate motion. Um, I have no issues with it. I think they're small, they're two betters. Um, it's, it's not very often that you see, you know, when it comes to five develop, you know, five or four. It's not often that they say, you know what, we're not going to do the three better, we're just going to do two bedroom. We're going to do them energy efficient, which is more than what's required. Um, you know, especially with the, with the solar and the tanks, well, the tanks will have to be there anyway, but just the way it's designed. I don't have any issues. I've seen the way, um, the sunlit areas and I understand that at the worst, at a particular time, you'll still, you'll only have fifty square metres of sunlight. But then it quickly, quickly goes up after a couple of hours. Um, and would I be upset if I was living next to this? No, no, I, I can honestly say if it was next to me, I wouldn't be upset and I don't want to live there anymore. I'd be okay with that.
Thank you. Any other speakers? councillor Congrie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, when I read this, I thought a bit of deja vu was going on and that I'd seen this all before. And then I looked through it and I thought, I can't believe that we're, we're back here given what we've already been through with this particular site. I remember when the original development came up and, um, I went out and stood in the residence around and, and, you know, walked the street, walked around the corner, had a look down the side of the next door neighbour, um, and looked at the minimal, it'd be fair to say the next door neighbour has a small outdoor space and, um, and that will lose so much sunlight in the morning. Um, I, I think about the amenity impacts on, on, on those people and the surrounding community. Um, and then when I look at the plans and I see, you know, the gap between houses, it doesn't even look like there's enough room to walk between houses if the bins are there. Like it's, we're really squishing these prop, these developments onto this block. You know, I think that this community would probably be accepting of three, maybe four developments on this site. And when I look at it, that's, that's sort of what I see. I think five is, is too much. Um, and it is a peculiar little spot on the corner there. Um, it's an interesting road network and I agree with the, the comments about it being a dangerous road network, particularly if you, um, you know, you're coming down there or walking to and from school. It's a very busy area. So look, I agree with this alternate motion and I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Goodie-Chair.
Again, Madam Mayor, I wish to support councillor Headish's, um, alternate motion. Um, I've worked it out on five hundred and fifty-seven square metre block, five double stories. It's a hundred and eleven point four square metres. It's very, very, very tight and, um, with so much land available in Australia, why are we squishing all these tiny little houses on blocks? You know, it's really, I can't see how it is within the neighbourhood character. That, that area there was not designed to have this amount of developments on there. So I will be supporting the alternate motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? councillor Trung.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yet I fully support for all the comment from other councillors. I, I agree, it's very small, it's a lot of land. It, uh, for the new, um, family or new people moving, it's no environment at all and no safety. Not only affect the, the local resident at the moment, but the new people moving is still affect them and I fully not support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, councillor Headish, it's back to you. Um, you've got the right to reply because, um, we had one councillor speak against your alternate motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be very brief. I take on board the comments. I think we all want to see a whole lot of, um, development affordable housing and so on, as been mentioned by many councillors previously. Uh, we, you have to do these things in the, in the right place in my view. Uh, this particular neighbourhood, the way the subdivision has been designed, it, it has this peculiar design that's dates back to the, the Wadawali Burley Griffin years. It has a sort of an octagonal shape to it and the streets follow that. The blocks are long and lean and developments, the, the housing stock that was put on there was affordable housing, uh, federation housing for the Mackay factories and, and also the, the war years servicing soldiers and that who came back from war. The developments of those times were utilizing the blocks as they stood. They were designed in certain ways and, and and I guess set out in certain ways to enable a, a house of that style and, and that to be placed on it. We've had since a whole range of different development happen in Albion and the neighbourhood character of the area has been affected by it. What's left is still brilliant. Um, we, we need to put in place some, some policy to support that more, but we, we're working on that. Uh, this particular issue though, that, uh, the issues that councillor Allen has raised, uh, for me, I go back to that and the points that councillor Congrie and others have made about five on the block here. It is not the right, not the right solution.
You've got thirty seconds.
Thank you. It is not the right solution and I think we all want the, the green buildings and we all want to see young people get into homes, but this is not the place for on a five unit development. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillors. Um, I'm going to, um, put it to a vote for the alternate motion. Those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. Okay, item twelve point seven, planning scheme amendment C two hundred part two, panel report and consideration of approval of amendment. Mister Walsh, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, council has received a planning panel report for the planning scheme amendment C two hundred part two, uh, which is in relation to the introduction of heritage controls of the Grand Estate Estate and Matthews Hill Precinct. Um, council is now required to consider the planning panel's recommendations and suggestions for further work and consider whether to adopt amendment C two hundred part two and submit it to the minister for planning approval and that would be with or without changes. Um, so council is asked to note the recommendations of the panel report, um, consider the adoption of the planning scheme amendment and to submit it to the, um, uh, the minister for planning for approval. Uh, the officer recommendation is, uh, six-part recommendations outlined in the papers, uh, that cover off those range of requirements.
Thank you, Mister Walsh. Um, councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Okay, could I please have a mover? Councillor Lancashire? Could you please refer to the motion?
Hi, yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, move the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Do I have a seconda? councillor Headish? Right, councillor Lancashire, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, as Chair of Council's Heritage Committee, um, we have, uh, over a long period of time seen this, uh, amendment moving through the system uh, to get to this point. And this report represents to council the planning panel report for amendment C two hundred and recommends that council adopt the amendment with the changes and submits it to the minister for planning for approval. Uh, the planning panel report considered the Grand Junction Estate, Matthews Hill Precinct in Sunshine is of local heritage significance and there is adequate strategic justification to supply, to apply the heritage overlay. The planning panel recommended that council proceed with the amendment with some changes to address some administrative errors. The planning panel did identify that future strategic work was required to address some specific matters resulting from the process and direction given by the Department of Environment, land, water and planning as a condition of authorization of the amendment. The strategic work may inform a future amendment to the Brimbank Planning Scheme. This report also recommends that council request the minister for planning extend the interim heritage overlay until a decision is made about a permanent heritage protection. The interim heritage overlay expires on the twenty-second of March, twenty twenty. The report also recommends that council write to all landowners and occupiers affected by this amendment, advising of council's decision. Um, and just some comments that have come through over the time that we don't have um, many more, um, many precincts or many more precincts, um, of a heritage nature that are coming through. Um, we are a city that's evolving in a building sense. This is quite a unique case. Um, the state government, um, and planning ha- have certainly issued caution um, to councils in, in putting, um, overlays of this type over large slabs of their municipalities. So this is quite unique to see this going through and we may not see too many more of these precincts being added in the future. So I would certainly recommend, um, I think this is a, a unique case that's worthy of support and, um, would certainly recommend council support and.
Thank you. councillor Headish.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with what councillor Lancashire said and I congratulate the officers for all the work that's gone into this. It's been a monumental task and it's had a few twists and turns along the way and we've all seen the outworkings of some of that. Um, this particular one, as at this, at this point in time, um, it, I think is a very well-known piece of work in the local community now. People have had a chance to get their heads around it. Not everyone, but most do. Uh, there's been objections, they've been heard by the panel, the panel's done its job and we have a series of recommendations here before us tonight, which I support. Um, I think the, um, the point for me in this is that we are putting in place or attempting to put in place through the minister, a, a scheme that will protect heritage going forward. I urge councillor Lancashire and his Heritage Committee to also have a look at Albion, uh, where we have a long, proud tradition of, of a, a heritage village that is slowly slipping away. And I look forward to seeing something come from that committee about ways that it will, uh, take on some work that will support the retention of what we have left before it's lost. Uh, Albion is a special place in this community and it needs to be thought of and treated that way by all of us. Uh, but in this case, in the Grand Junction Estate, um, I live within it. Uh, it is a very good piece of work that the council has done. Uh, people have been consulted with, they've had opportunities to raise their issues and to have them thrashed out and, uh, and suitable input made. Some of the decisions that the panels made won't be, won't be ones that people are happy with. Uh, but, uh, at the end of the day, they've made the decisions and, uh, they're before us here tonight. Uh, I support the motion that we're dealing with tonight. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Headish. Any other speakers? Okay, I'll put this motion to a vote. Those in, those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. Um, item twelve point eight, governance report, February twenty twenty. We'll have councillor, uh, Mister Hogan present the report first. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you councillor Congrie. Um, the monthly governance report is a standing item within the ordinary council meeting agenda. It is a summary of recent governance activity in accordance with best practice and good governance principles. Written in compliance with the Local Government Act of nineteen eighty-nine, the report variously informs council of delegated decisions, outcomes of previous council resolutions, seeks relevant decision for action or provides information for council's awareness. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or points of clarification councillors? Councillor Congrie, I believe you're declaring a conflict of interest?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I need to declare a conflict of interest at item twelve point eight A two as I have an indirect interest in this matter by way of a conflicting duty. Um, I also would request, Madam Mayor, that we split this motion so that I may participate in the debate. So we hear item, um, twelve point eight A first, um, and then the remainder of the item once I'm able to return to the room.
Okay, so what we'll do is, um, do we need to go through a motion for? Okay, so councillor Congrie, if you could leave the room, we'll go through that point first. Now, could I please have a mover split this motion, please?
I'll move the motion, Madam Mayor, as printed in the business papers or as twelve point A, as printed in the business papers.
Thank you councillor, uh, Goodie-Chair. Could I have a seconda please? councillor Headish? Or I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour, against, carried. Okay. Um, all right, we'll do the first part of twelve point eight A two. Uh, councillor Goodie-Chair, would you like to speak to that point?
Uh, no, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. councillor Headish, would you like to make a comment? Any other speakers for this? No. All those in favour, against, carried. Could someone please get councillor Congrie? Okay, councillors, could I please have a mover for the remaining of the report? Uh, the governance report for February twenty twenty. Councillor Goodie-Chair, could I please have, thank you. councillor Headish? Thank you councillor Goodie-Chair, would you like to speak to the?
Yes, just briefly, um, this falls under the, um, Brimbank Innovation Portfolio, with which I'm the champion. And it does include the governance and probity and I would also like to highlight the importance of this monthly governance report to council. This report delivers reassurance on the way we conduct our governance. This report provides ongoing transparency and accountability to our community. And the report includes a wide range of important reports, including, but not limiting to, records of assemblies of councillors, delegates and representative reports, councillors' travel approvals, report back on contracts entered into, details about the bushfire donation, twenty twenty-one community grounds, categories and timelines, and MOU with life-saving Victoria and also some comments on the local government bill which were added just recently. And I also wish to appoint, um, in part four, G four, uh, councillors John Headish as the Chair of the Hearing Committee, um, councillor, uh, Kim Chung, Deputy Mayor, also on the committee and myself on the, on the hearings committee as well. And just to make a couple of comments, um, Madam Mayor, uh, there's a lot in this report this month. Um, we haven't had a council meeting since December, so there's a lot been going on. And whilst there hasn't been a council meeting, it doesn't certainly mean that councillors haven't been working and this report actually proves that councillors have been working very hard out there in the community, whether it was to do with the bushfire, whether it's to do with delegates and representative reports, uh, reading all of our papers and also the signing of the MOU with the life-saving Victoria. A very significant, uh, thing to do here for Brimbank, considering the problems that people have had with swimming, people dying, children dying in swimming pools. So it's important that the knowledge out there is actually spread around. And also, of course, the local government bill reforms, uh, which I think will be dear to some, not, some if maybe not all councillors' hearts. Uh, that, um, we are saying that we want to retain the current range of flexible electoral boundaries. Uh, the local government minister is saying that he wants to go back to single ward boundaries. And we are also wanting for the local government minister to include in his bill to proceed with donation reform with the addition to ban on donations to local council candidates from property developers and the gambling industry. And that is particularly interesting considering what happened to another council earlier on today. So I would hope that the minister listens to us and, um, certainly has, um, a look at the local government bill. And I'm sure that other councils, of course, will also be going along that line. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Goodie-Chair. councillor Headish?
Thank you, madam mayor. I echo councillor Goodrich's comments. I also note a couple of things of interest that we are going back out again with the proposed sale of one thirty McIntyre Road, Sunshine North, and forming a section two two three committee around that to hear submissions. I'm also really pleased that we are making a response like we are making to the local government bill reforms and reiterating our support for retaining the current range of flexible electoral structures. We don't want our local government politicised more than ever. And I guess the risks with a change to a single ward model are significant for this community. And we do need to have that flexibility and the existing multiple member ward structures, I think, is the ideal one for a community like ours. That's just my opinion, but I support what's going forward and the donations reform is a no-brainer. We've seen too much of corruption in the council down the road, they've got the sack today. We don't want to see that, that sort of thing happening here. We've had our histories, but we are well past that now. And we need to be doing all this preventive type work and supporting this preventive type work going forward. I commend the council offices for all the work they're doing in this space with all prevention and various other things. I think it's terrific work. It needs to be supported fully by all of us. Zero tolerance has to be our goal. And I really look forward to supporting this particular motion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Headitch. Any other speakers? Councillor Congrie?
Thank you, madam mayor. Thank you for allowing this sort of the vote. The governance report is certainly one of my favourites. And I read it with great interest every month. Firstly, I wanted to commend council officers and the mayor and councillor Tarkos for their upcoming visit to Canberra. We did one late last year and it was very successful by all accounts and you guys are spending a bit more time there than we did. We got some really great outcomes as a result of that, probably Stoney Creek and progressing the Stoney Creek, although it's not perfect, we got something. Which was, which was the, the point. But with so much going on in Brimbank at the moment with the Marl, our ambitions to become the centre of, capital of Melbourne West, it's really important to keep pressing that message with our politicians. They can't forget Brimbank, they need to remember we're here, we're committed and we want to work with them to get the best outcomes for our community. I also note that we're continuing our, our request for funding for St Albans Leisure Centre, which is just so, so important. And we're talking about that a little bit later on this evening. I think we've all watched with great interest the sports rot scandal. And I had, I wouldn't say a cackle, but I was pleased that the issue with Karangamite came up because that was at the same time that we were applying for funding. We didn't get any funding, however, Karangamite, who didn't ask for funding, got funding. So I'm glad that that came out and there was a suitable amount of community outrage associated with that. I also wanted to comment on the community grants programme. I'm not sure that we've touched on that yet. But last year we gave out more than six hundred grand in funding. It's similar this year. It's such an amazing programme and we're so privileged as a council to be able to provide this. Late last year, I spoke to some of the grant recipients from last, last year's funding. And one of them stood out to me, and those that were there will probably agree with me, there was a group who produced a stage show for people with disability. And I spoke to the mum and the dad of one of the participants who had a profound disability. And they talked about the life-changing experience that came about from the community grants programme, in particular for their son. And it made me really quite emotional, to be honest. The change in that young man's life, the confidence, the self-belief that a small amount of money was able to instill in him. And not just him, but that entire group was absolutely tremendous. And that's what this is about, this is what the community about, and that's, that's what this grants process is all about. It's about bringing the community together, enabling wonderful projects and people within the community to deliver and develop wonderful things. So every idea is important and as I say, from little things, big things grow. So my message to our community and to anyone is that we need to have a go here and if anyone's ever created doing something and needs some extra help along the way, go through the community grants process and apply for it. And you never know, you might be successful. So I commend this report to council and say thank you for our team for putting it together. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Congrie. Any other speakers? Councillor Tarkos?
Madam mayor, I'd also just like to put my resilient portfolio hat on and say that we've hit the ground running. And I'm happy to report that both yourself and myself have been extremely busy attending meetings with both state and federal MPs in the last few weeks. Four to six meetings. We have discussed a wide range of both what we consider to be pressing priorities as well as long-term priorities for our Brimbank community. As mentioned by councillor Congrie, Marl is one of them. St Albans Leisure Centre is at the top of the list and we will be taking that message strongly to Canberra when we speak to the federal politicians there. Women in sport, I know is your passion and education and we will be also delivering what's will be an extensive school visitation programme, which I think is vital in terms of the future of our kids and jobs. And one of the areas that we'll be exploring is the Head Start Programme, which is, has been rolled out in all schools, high schools in Brimbank, which basically starts kids apprenticeships in year ten. So potentially a lot of kids that may be struggling with their academic vocational pathway will find that this programme, which links them into an apprenticeship and also to trade school, but also completes their VCal, will hit a really good, you know, opportunity in terms of the jobs that may be offered in the future and the trade shortages that may come out of those infrastructure projects. So I know that that's a real big passion of yours, mayor, and we will be really committed to presenting that to our schools. And that's something that all councillors will be participating in. Women and girls in sport is another highlight that we'll be promoting. The impacts of the north and south flight path has been something that we've been talking to every MP. And I can't stress this enough, our community's voice, we are it. So we have been taking the concerns of our community straight to the MPs when we haven't been glossing over anything. We've been telling them Brimbank will be the greatest impacted by the north-south. We need to have some strong conversations, not just with Melbourne Airport, but air services about these impacts and how we will be moving forward. And that will be addressed in another report coming up. We will also be, as mentioned, travelling to Canberra. We have a comprehensive three days where we'll be discussing airport matters, but also jobs, the Marl, and more importantly to me, funding for the St Albans Leisure Centre. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tarkos. Any other speakers? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. Twelve point nine, streaming council meetings, February twenty twenty. Mr Hogan?
Thank you, madam mayor. Council has asked this evening to consider the experience and outcomes of a twelve-month trial in the online video streaming of council meetings and consider whether or not it wishes to continue streaming meetings and in what fashion. The recommendation of officers is to continue streaming meetings on demand as practised throughout the trial period. I commend the report to council.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions or? No? Okay. I'll put it forward. No, actually, I'll put it to a mover. Thank you.
Thank you, madam mayor. I'll move the recommendation as printed in the business papers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Farm, would the mover like to speak to the motion?
Simply to say, madam mayor, that I've welcomed the council meetings being broadcast because they're not really live-streamed. I think the councillors have all welcomed this very wonderful thing to do for our community. There hasn't been that much uptake, I have to say, in reading the report, hoping that perhaps going into the future there will be more uptake. I certainly haven't received any requests for live-streaming, I have to say so. I'm happy to stay the way that we are. And the fact that we have chapters makes it easier for people viewing. For instance, this evening we had four planning permit applications. Would be easier for residents who were not able to attend this evening to go back into the council or YouTube and have a look at that exact item without having to go through the whole thing. So as I've said, I've had no requests for live-streaming. I'm happy to stay the way, the way that we are. And at the end of the day, a new councillor is coming in in October this year, at the end of October. And no doubt the new council will be having a look at this policy once again. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Goodrich. Councillor Farm, would you like to speak to this motion?
Just a brief, at the moment I feel more comfortable staying the same way.
As we are. Okay, thank you. Any other speakers? Councillor Congrie?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd actually like to speak against this item and foreshadow an alternate motion that considers that council consider live-streaming and in the interim we continue with the on-demand model until we have a live-streaming proposal in front of us to consider. So the reason for me speaking against this item is that I think that we should be immediately or as quickly as possible, live-streaming council meetings and other meetings. Recording and playing back meetings, in my view, and what is being proposed here is an ultra-low risk approach and it's very conservative in my view. I was looking at our council plan today and page nineteen of the council plan states, and I quote, "We want to be an innovative and responsive community-first council. We want to be fairer and a more participative council. We want to consult with the community and we want to use different communication methods." So my question is, are these just words or have we actually, do we actually want to put this into place? We have thousands and thousands of followers on our social media networks. There is a much higher chance that those users going through social media streams and tuning, of them tuning into a live meeting than there is someone choosing to watch back a meeting after the fact, a week after it's been played out. Especially when our friend from Star Weekly, Ivy here, is likely have already to have reported that in the paper. We can easily demonstrate that. So I recently watched back a play, a live playback of the Moonee Valley council meeting. And when I was watching, there was over two hundred people watching that meeting and they were providing a live commentary at the same time. That's far greater than the audience that we've got here today and it's far greater than the results that we're getting from the on-demand streaming right now. My view, as I said before, is that live streaming is low risk and acceptable. During the pilot period when I was the mayor, we had no instances of having to alter the playback during, due to any of the issues that were raised as a, as a risk from the council offices. If those issues were going to arise or to be common, we would have experienced that during the pilot. I think it's pretty clear here that I am particularly passionate about bringing meetings to the community. Councillors might recall, I raised this during a cot session within the first few weeks of being elected. And I was the one that raised it as a norm, which brought about the pilot. I said at the time, I'll reinforce and I will reinforce this today, that live streaming is about transparency, it's about trust and it's about ownership. It's about getting people involved in the democratic process and our aim here should be to get as many people involved as we can. It's about making council meetings accessible to our community. If we live-stream, we will get an audience far greater than what we get now and we will get more community people involved and engaged in council and the democratic process. And that's exactly what we should be aiming for. We want the mums and the dads in the community. We want the whole community, all those hardworking people in our community to have access to this forum. Seven o'clock on a Tuesday night is not convenient for most. We've got an obligation to those who can't ordinarily attend this meeting to be involved.
Councillor Congrie, your time is over.
Thank you. Can I have an extension for two minutes, please?
Two minutes.
Thank you. And my view is we simply have to do this. Of the other councils that have been benchmarked in this report, nine of the thirteen are currently live-streaming. Only four don't. That says to me that there's a genuine acceptance of the risk. We should be leaders and not laggards in this space. Absolutely not laggards. Remember our council plan, which is an innovative and community-first council. I understand that some councils are scared of live-streaming or feel they don't have the adequate training. But at this point, we need to move past this. We are in year four and we know the ropes by now. We need to get on with it and we need to do this. Given the history of our council, I believe that we owe it to the community to do this and I urge my councillors to vote down this item and to support the alternate. I'd like people to be brave, to be bold, to be leaders and to bring democracy into the homes of our community. True democracy. So councillors, as I mentioned, I have an alternate motion and I foreshadow that motion and I urge you to vote this one down. Thank you.
Okay, could I please ask a question to Mr Hogan? Just clarification, council streaming is available by Friday of the same week of council, so three days, not one week later?
Yes, typically that's the practice, that we publish at the same time that we publish meeting minutes. It's typically the practice. However, under policy, it does suggest that no more than five days. So it has at times been longer than that, where we've had need to look at the footage in more depth and perhaps seek advice internally or externally about the appropriateness of some of the footage.
Thank you for clarifying that. All right. Yes?
Thank you. Mr Hogan, are you able to just confirm how many of those meetings have been done within three days and how many have done within five? Do we have that data available?
Not with me councillor, but I'd be happy to provide that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? A question. Councillor Allen?
So.
This is to Mr Hogan?
Well, just question on the procedure. So if we vote this one, if we, if people vote against this one, then there's the option of a foreshadow, which is in support of live-streaming?
Become the subs, yeah.
Yeah, just want to clarify.
Councillor Headitch?
Thank you, madam mayor. I also have wrestled with this and I've heard comments from a number of councillors who are concerned about a move to live-streaming. I hear their concerns and I hear their, I understand what they're saying and I, I hear them saying that there needs to be some further conversations and there needs to be some further thinking about how this plays out and what it means for councillors. Though I also think that we should be adopting a more, we need to adopt a more progressive approach and we need to be in that leadership van. We shouldn't be in the laggard van in this sort of thing. I, I've been knocking around a conference over the weekend, the National Climate Summit and National Climate Emergency Summit, I should say, and I was inspired there by the young people in our community. And for me, there at high school, there getting out on the streets and taking the action against climate change and so on, they're the people we need to get to. And we need to get them in a, get to them in a timely way. We've just formed a youth council, we've just formed, you know, a range of youth groups and we've got reports tonight which are terrific. But we're not going to get them coming here when they've got school and various other things. We do, we all have fears about standing up in, in public and speaking and what might go across the the airwaves and so on, but we've got to get past that in my view and we need to have a conversation about how we do that. But for me, live streaming is the way of the future for us and that we have to grab the bull by the horns and ride it to the end. We, we, we need to start leading on this stuff. We need to start forming community alliances. We need to start forming alliances with our young people. We need to start doing that using the media and tools we have available to us. And we need to be doing it as soon as we possibly can. It is crucial. And I, I support councillor Congrie's move for an alternative. I think we can work those things through if we sit down and talk about it a bit more. But I think we need to move that step further. But in a, in a way that allows a conversation to happen and allows people to put their, their concerns and fears on the table in a conversation that's moving forward to a new paradigm. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? Okay, councillor Goodrich, you've got the right to reply.
Thank you, madam mayor. Yes, in my right of reply, madam mayor, there is certainly no evidence that live streaming will engage more people. They will only engage if there's a reason. And we saw that reason here tonight. There were four planning permit applications. Three of them residents were here. In fact, some residents are still here to hear that decision. So that's the same with a council meeting that's either live-streamed or has been streamed the way that we are doing it now. People will go in and find out what they want to find out and they will come to a council meeting if they need to and they will look at that recording if they need to as well. Now councillor Congrie mentioned page nineteen of the council plan of us being an innovative and community-first council. Just because we don't live-stream, that doesn't mean that we are not an innovative and community-first council. Community first means that we're out there listening to our residents. Innovative means that we're willing to embrace different ways of doing things. We've done that already in many, many ways in this council. It means making progressive policies. At the moment, I agree of the system that we have now. If councillors don't agree with me, that's fine. We'll work out another system. But for me, it doesn't mean that we're not an innovative and community-first council. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Goodrich. Councillors, I'll put this motion to a vote. Those in favour? Those against? Those against? Carried. Yes, um those who voted for um streaming council meetings, stand up please. Councillor Farm, councillor Lancashire, councillor David, councillor Troy, councillor Tarkos, councillor Borg and coun- councillor Goodie and myself. Those against? Councillor Headige, councillor Allen and councillor Congrie. Thank you. Okay. We're up to item twelve point one zero, the draft councillor code of conduct. Could I please ask um Mr Hogan to present the report? Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Amongst other related obligations, the Local Government Act requires a councillor code of conduct, which is most simply described as a commitment by councillors on how they agree to work together and conduct themselves in all aspects of their duties. This report responds to a previous resolution of council to review the current code. As obliged under the governance major policy consultation, local law number two of two thousand and fourteen, we seek tonight council endorsement for the revised draft code and multiple incorporated draft documents to be released for community consultation prior to receiving a final report for council consideration.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Okay, could I please have a mover?
Move, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Goodie, a seconda. Councillor Borg, councillor Goodie.
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, I know we've got a very long agenda to get through. Um after much discussion amongst councillors and with all of the officers' help, we have now finally arrived at our councillor code of conduct. So I'm very pleased to commend this policy, Madam Mayor. It embodies all that we represent. It makes us accountable to ourselves and also to our community. And that's all I wish to say. Thank you.
Also, we do have a.
That's right, and we have three people on the committee. Uh Madam Mayor, I think it was yourself as the chair, myself and councillor David, who will be on the committee to hear submissions. So I look forward to actually uh receiving all of the submissions from the public and then we can actually finalise our code of conduct. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the seconda like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to again endorse um what councillor Didditch said regarding this document. A lot of work has been uh put into it and it has been comprehensively reviewed by councillors and council officers over a series of workshops. Um I will be very much looking forward to uh the community's contribution to this draft.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Councillor Congrie?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um I'm just reading my notes here. I must have been quite frustrated when I wrote them. But can I just say that we're, I'm quite glad that we're here and at the end of this process. It's been a really, really long road. Um it's cost us a lot of time and ultimately it's cost the rate payers a lot of money to go through this process and to review it. Um you know, we know that there are issues around the code of conduct. We know there are issues around the process. We hope that the Local Government Act will bring about some um some additional scrutiny in this area and probably a unified code of conduct. The other thing that we hope is that the code of conduct has some ramifications for those that don't adhere to it because right now it's pretty much a toothless tiger and there's no ramifications of breach of code anyway, which we found out. Um so frankly, um I'll be glad to see the end of this and for us to move on on to better and better things and to working for the community, which is what we're all about. Um and for me, there is some good things that come out of this review and and it's around minor changes to the transparency surrounding councillor expenses. I'm sure the community will appreciate that. So let's get on with this. Let's spend the remainder of our term focused on what we're here for, which is getting the best outcomes for the community. And um I commend it to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Headige?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um I commend the officers. Um it's been a a long, laborious task and uh we needed uh a whole lot of strengthening of this code of conduct from the beginning, uh which became obvious on the way through. A number of us have been affected by different events that have occurred and uh they uh they, the battle scars still still lay there. Um I guess for me, uh the code of conduct uh is only as good as the people who adopt it and live it. Uh I, I am always a little cynical about these sorts of tools because we see uh from time to time uh the way uh councils behave and the way uh groups of people who should be able to team don't and uh various other, I guess, uh negative forces play out. But the 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 way forward on these is to, I guess, um come together and to commit as we're trying to do uh to the values and principles of this code and to live them. And that means every day, every moment, we're working together and uh I think we've got, still got a way to go with this. To be honest, we've got to practise, we've got to uh familiarise ourselves with what it all means and how it works, but I congratulate the officers for the work that they've done over this period of time. It's year four. Uh we've had a number of iterations and a number of changes and this hopefully will be the final ones before the next council's elected. Uh but uh for me, uh I'm really pleased to see it here tonight and concluding as councillor Congrie said, uh but we have to live it.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Right, I'll put it forward to a vote. Those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. Um item number twelve point one one, quarterly financial report for the period ending thirty first of December two thousand and nineteen. Um Shane Ma, do you mind presenting this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report is a standard res- report presented to council quarterly and shows the financial results for the period ended thirty first of December two thousand and nineteen. And also provides a forecast year-end result as at the thirtieth of June two thousand and twenty. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or points of clarification, councillors? Do I have a mover? Councillor Congrie, a seconda. Councillor Goodie. Councillor Congrie?
Thank you, councillor Pavafodio. Um my accounting hat really satisfies me when I go through my financial reports every quarter. It's probably one of the most important things that we do. So I guess the key takeout, the first thing that we look at as a, as a board or a council is the the Vago six sustainability indicators. All those ratios are currently sitting in the low-risk category, which is in line with our current risk appetite. Um with the exception of the asset renewal indicator, which is um into in the median category. So we'll continue to monitor that, but uh there is no cause for concern. Everything else looks pretty healthy as um Mr Ma suggested. The other thing that I pulled out from reading through the report was a couple of interesting tidbits. Um uh curbside recycling, so we would all recall the recycling crisis of last year. So that cost us um out of pocket five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars and remember we were sending um landfill, uh we're sending recycling to landfill. Um pleasingly, we got four hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight of that back through the government. Um so when you hold, we're only twenty-five thousand out of pocket, which is actually a pretty good outcome from where we thought we might have been when that, when that crisis started. And um you know, good on the state government for coming to the party and helping that along, helping us along the way there. Um the other thing that came out, which I thought was really interesting, was at-core waste being over budget by two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Um when I asked questions around that, I thought, oh, that's really interesting. But what it shows is that we weren't expecting the take-up that our community has given us in terms of at-core waste recycling, which means they love it, right? They love being able to ring up and book their appointments and getting their waste picked up. So for me, the financial reports aren't just numbers. You pick up some of these wonderful things about what the community is doing and what the community is saying to you. So um I commend the report to council, um I congratulate everyone on on their works here and um you know, I think it's a pretty good outcome, all in all. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Goodie, would you like to speak?
Uh just simply, Madam Mayor, thank you councillor Congrie for picking out those things. Some of those things were the things that I was going to speak about, but that's okay. Um uh it certainly does show though that decisions are made and actions are taken with strong regard to the financial effects on future generations. And I thank um our financial team for putting this report together, even though it's a quarterly report. Um and it seems that maybe it may be easy to put together, but it is a lot of information in that quarterly report. And councillors need to familiarise themselves with um quarterly reports uh to make sure that we are understanding what happens between quarters in our finances. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Tarkos?
I would also like to echo all that's been said, especially around the waste management because it was reaching uh what we would call a crisis state. And for us to be managing it with this um, something we developed in the Waste Management Committee uh that we had set up, that we would um have this booking system, I think that uh it's been taken up and it's be- been extremely popular. And we don't have that um environment where there's rubbish everywhere, uh it, you know, in certain times of the month. The other thing I would also like to commend in this report is the level of um work that we're we're doing in the infrastructure and the projects. St Albans um leisure centre is going to be hopefully commenced. Eriington Precinct Master Plan for Stage Three is going to transform St Albans. The civic centre is starting. More sports um pavilion redevelopments um at the moment and they're currently going under budget, which is great. We've got the Lakes Reserve, we've got um MB Lynch Memorial Garden improvements that are going to be uh uh going on this year and a whole raft of roadworks that we're continuing. Ashfall, Ashfelt and also rehabilitation. Albion Station access improvement projects, four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. It's time we've spent in those areas that, you know, in the past didn't even get a look in. Uh Balmoral Reserve, um the water fart harvesting system, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars is also uh under budget. So with the amount in of infrastructure that we're spending on all delivering things to our community, um to benefit our community, I commend the officers for keeping things under budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Councillor Headige?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I support everything that's been said before. Um I also note the Vargel indicators that we are in the low-risk area and that uh we uh need to do a bit more in the asset and ma- asset maintenance area. Uh we're in the medium-risk area there. Uh for me though, um these these ratios uh make me think about what's coming. We will com- we are committing uh ourselves to do a whole lot of work in uh different parts of town, but there is so much to do on the books, so much to do. And uh I noted, note that uh the financial forecasting we've seen takes us up a notch or two when the St Albans Leisure Centre project comes on stream. But uh for me, I think we need to keep our weather eye on uh taking a bit more risk and lifting the appetite. Uh I ca- I've said it all the way through this council, I say it again. Uh we are a low-risk council in many, many ways and uh risk is not in the DNA of this council. Uh it needs to be. Uh we have a community that's crying out for us to do that. Uh I'll leave it at that. There's more to come with the rest of this uh this meeting.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? Okay, I'll put the mo- motion to a vote. Those in favour, against, carried. Okay, um twelve point one two, report on open space deficit in Sunshine North, Mr Whiteside. Would you please brief us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh certainly. Um uh at the auditing council meeting on the fifteenth of Oc- October two thousand and nineteen, council considered a notice of motion in relation to open space deficit in Sunshine North and resolved to receive an update report prior to the twenty twenty-one budget process. Uh this report provides council with analysis of the provision rate and proximity of public open space network in Brimbank, details areas in deficit and current and future actions that seek to address the deficit through the continued implementation of council's Creating Better Parks policy and plan. Uh the council officer recommendation recommends that council note the report on the provision of open space across Brimbank and notes the future actions to reduce the open s- open space deficit in Sunshine North. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Whiteside. Are there any questions or points of clarification? No. Do I have a mover? Mr Headige? Uh councillor Headige, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh I'd like to move an alternate motion. Uh the alternate motion goes along the lines of uh that council notes the report provided on how creating better parks policy and plan has dealt with open space deficits. And uh the key issues emerging from it, uh I noticed that's not.
It's up there now.
It's up there now. Can we go to the top, please? Up to the top on the screen. Uh com- the the one that I submitted had some further words on the back, on the end of A, how the policy and plan has dealt with open space deficits and the key issues arising. And the end A. Do we have to wait for it to go into here? Open, we've dealt with open space deficits and the key issues arising. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, this is the original. I'm sorry. My mistake here. I'm reading the wrong part of this uh this document. My mistake. Apologise. So that council, as as we've said, notes the open space deficit to date and the issues arising, notes for consideration, proposed future actions to reduce open space deficits in Sunshine North. C, uh receives a further report to council that maps and shows the sizes of parks and playgrounds in each ward. We've had a report on, I'll come back to that. Uh outlines council's policy regarding development and maintenance of pocket parks. And three, details the level of investment in these parks and playgrounds over the last five years.
Councillor Headige, is point A correct up there?
It is.
It is, okay.
Thank you. We've gone through uh C, one, two and three. D develops for council consideration. One, a draft policy for open space and parkland procurement. That's purpose is to address deficits like that occurring currently in North Sunshine. Two, a North Sunshine Open Space and Parklands Deficit Reduction Action Plan with estimated timelines that incorporates Brimbank City Council park reclassifications and shared user path initiatives, proposed school partnership initiatives, planned developer-led parkland, shared user paths and bridge projects, planned playground equipment upgrades and advocacy for government and others for parkland and other enhancements at Upper Stony Creek and other parts of North Sunshine where clear gaps exist. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a seconda? Councillor Troy, councillor Headige, would you like to speak to this motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um we've, we've seen uh the report. It's a good report. Uh it provides a lot of information on how, about open space deficits. The next level down is about parks and playgrounds deficits uh within, uh opens, parks and playgrounds sit within the open space and it's not clear from the report uh what that uh deficit might be. Um we have also um had the Creating Better Parks policy in place for some time and we haven't uh got a lot of results in terms of uh either reclassifications or um school partnership initiatives and various other things up under that policy at the moment. We don't have a uh procurement policy and looking for guidance around the uh pocket parks area and how we plan to develop and emerge that, uh development and uh in- invest in those going forward. So for me, I I I'm putting forward this uh with a with a North Sunshine community hat on, but also a wider Brimbank hat on. Uh the North Sunshine community hat uh is one that is telling us that for a long, long time there have been gaps in uh open space and parks and playgrounds provision. Uh the wider Brimbank hat says the population is going to increase significantly over time and we're going to have enormous pressures on our parks and playgrounds and our open space as we go along. And we will need to think about various things like um reclassifications of parks, about uh land procurement where gaps exist. We will need to think about uh planned uh school partnerships and it's great to see the mayor taking that on and uh and getting out there and talking to schools about partnership initiatives in this and sports areas. Uh we know that we're going to have developer-led parkland uh down in the River Valley estate, but we don't know the scale and extent of it. Uh we we also know that we're going to uh have to enhance our playground equipment. I think a number of us have seen our grandparents and children in the North Sunshine area in recent weeks and they're commenting on the equipment being not suitable for young children, but being suitable for older children in some parks. And they're small parks, most of them, they're, they're very tiny ones. We have um uh lots of people talking about the the need to refresh play- playground equipment, so it'd be good to see what the plans are going forward. And we also um know that we we have the uh, I guess, the recommencement of the Upper Stony Creek Transformation Project, but that it will deliver a reduced scope of work for the same budget that was put in place initially. And that 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 leaves the North Sunshine community with a, with a real gap in parkland, particularly on that western side of the Sunny Creek. And it leaves the the North Sunshine community with uh an ongoing gap around that whole area uh to the uh east of Sunny Creek as well. Uh so we are looking for advocacy around that. Uh, so we are looking for advocacy around that, uh, around Sun- Upper Stony Creek, uh, further development of that initiative and the other parts of North Sunshine where clear gaps exist. There will be other parts of Brimbank also where clear gaps exist over time as, uh, population grows. And, uh, at the moment, the Creating Better Parks policy is doing a great job in, uh, identifying parks that need to be improved all around, uh, all around Brimbank, but it's, it's not picking up these sorts of things on the way through. So we have all these issues coming out of North Sunshine because we have, uh, the policy missing this at the moment. Uh, so what, what's being proposed is that council maps and shows sizes of parks in each ward, that it outlines its policy regarding the maintenance of pocket parks, development and maintenance of pocket parks. It details the level of investment, so we understand where we've been putting our money. But it develops a council consideration, a draft policy for open space and parkland land procurement, looking forward and saying, well, where might we need to do it? But more importantly, how would we do it? You know, we have developer contributions, we have a range of, you know, other philanthropic and business organisations and developers in the area that might be able to help us out. How are we going to think about this as we go forward? Because by the, the community in, in ten years' time will be looking for this sort of policy and be looking for it now in North Sunshine. Um, we also need to, um, think about an action plan. We've got all these different pieces of action identified in the report, but nowhere is it pulled together in one place, so a community can see a list of things that council's considering for, for this area to fix what are clear gaps, clear, clear emissions in terms of, um, access to parks and playgrounds and open space. So if we had a list that had on it, you know, the park reclassifications at Northumberland, um, at, you know, wherever it might be, those are listed out under that heading. We have the list of shared user path initiatives we, we have going forward in the next little while. I fo- for shadow an extension here if I can for about a minute. Um, we, we have a list of the proposed school partnership initiatives that, uh, will, will come from the work that goes on between the mayor and the schools and the, the education department and the principals.
I'll give you two more minutes.
Have an extension, please.
Yes, two more minutes.
Um, we need a, a list of the proposals that are coming out of the development along the River Valley, for example. We know there's a parkland coming there, we know there's a bridge to go over the, the river at some point in time to connect up to Avondale Heights. What are the equipment upgrades in the various parks that are being, being considered at the moment? And, you know, what are, what is our position on advocacy around some of these issues, uh, around Upper Stony Creek? We have the, uh, the new scope of work, the reduced scope of work going on at the moment, uh, within the existing budget, but, uh, we don't know, uh, what we need to do next. We haven't got a, a plan of action for that. So it's about putting that action plan together and bringing that back to council for it to consider in a holistic way and being able to demonstrate to the North Sunshine community that we are taking action, these are the sorts of things we're working on. Uh, they won't probably all come off, but there is a plan in place, and this is the action that we're taking to fill gaps, uh, in an area that clearly came out of the report as the one with the biggest gaps and the biggest deficits. And, uh, I commend the officers for the report they've done, it's, it's highly valuable, and the Creating Better Parks policy is highly valuable. The point here is that the various instruments and tools that we have at our disposal as a council at the moment have failed to address these issues in the North Sunshine area, failed to bring them up, failed to be able to, um, identify, we're getting them identified now as a response to some of the, uh, I guess, community concerns that have come out, and, uh, it's really pleasing to see that happening, but let's consolidate it with some policy and an action plan so that everyone knows what is going on in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Trum, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, could, uh, councillor Headige, it already go in a lot of detail. I just would like to add in is like, we, um, we have the, the budget provision to either produce the, uh, the private owner plan on working partnership with the other few open space. Also, I think I agree with councillor Headige, if we put all the planning and the project together, it, not only in North Sunshine, but on other area in Brimbank, so easy for all other councillors know, and also the member in community, easy to get in and understand is what going on with our park. And, um, more proponent for new future show for funding, but this need plan in loose the, but not the limit development contribution and invite the private people to get involved too.
Thank you. Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Tarkos?
Madam Mayor, I, I'm speaking from a ward which has got probably the highest ratio to open space, so I, um, value that where I live because of that, because I have access to wherever I can walk within fifteen, twenty minutes, I will find a park. I believe that there is a real deficit in North Sunshine, and it is spelled out in this ma- i- in this excellent report provided by officers. How we address it needs to be very key to our, it has to be a strategy, and some of the ideas that I thought of was, um, to look at enhancements, um, of the existing parks, to look at enhancing pocket parks, because even open spaces that were considered not parks, we've been able to invest in and evolve plant trees, and they have become beautiful pocket parks for our community that are in walking, uh, distance for a lot of, um, families. Because what families want to do is not get in a car, just pack the pram, grab the dog and be able to walk to a park. It doesn't matter if it's a big park, a small park, as long as there's trees. Um, I believe that, that access to open spaces is not only good for our physical wellbeing, but it is essential to our mental health wellbeing as well. People live busy lifestyles, they want to switch off. Uh, not everyone's got the commitment to go to gyms these days, but going for a walk in the park, taking your children out, um, walking the dog, seeing a tree, seeing a river, seeing a creek, actually does just as, as good job as a gym. In fact, I think it, it also connects the community. Uh, I've met a lot of, uh, the people, my neighbours in parks, uh, just by, uh, you know, visiting, and I think, um, school partnerships is one that the, the mayor will be following up, which is, I think, a brilliant idea, because you look at Lloyd Reserve, where it backs onto a school, and you've got the playground there. Now, let's look at a bigger picture where we can connect all that space and make it something a little better than what it is at the moment, because I saw grandparents with young kids right at the end of that playground, right on a busy road, and I thought, wouldn't it be better if that playground was in the middle next to the school where the schoolkids can have access to it? Because now they have to walk right around that oval, which is quite, you know, if there's a game on, cricket game or whatever, doesn't work. It's very disjointed. So let's, let's look at schools, have those conversations, uh, and, um, also look at compulsory acquisition. If, if, with, with, um, looking at, as, um, councillor Trum said, um, with the developer contributions, we, we saw earlier in our, um, agenda that there was a developer that's going to contribute over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Let's take some of that money and look at investing in enhancement of, um, existing parks or maybe down the track compulsory acquisition. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tarkos. Any other speakers? Councillor Lancashire?
Madam Mayor, I, I have a, a question. I- in the report it refers to, uh, funding through development contributions and open space contributions, and the question relates to these additional, um, uh, uh, studies that may result in open space acquisitions and things like that. Will they, um, will they still be able to be covered by the, um, development contributions and, uh, the open space levies? That, that there's not an inconsistency in the extension of the, uh, the amendment here in terms of potential sources of funding?
Mr Whiteside, would you be able to answer Mr, uh, councillor Lancashire's?
Uh, uh, yes, I'm, I'm not exactly sure, uh, on the intent of the question, but if, if it's in relation to the alternate motion, uh, and the outcomes of that, essentially what's been requested, uh, in the alternate motion is a report back, uh, with the provision of a policy, um, and also an action plan to action some of the, uh, the requirements that were already recommended in the officer report. Uh, in terms of DCP's, uh, Development Contribution Plan, uh, all of those things would be considered as part of the development of that policy and subsequent action plan. Uh, I think that covers it off unless, um, Director Walsh would like to add anything else?
No, Director Whiteside.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Lancashire, is this a question or are you making a statement?
Oh, I was going to make a statement.
Okay.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Um, uh, having, uh, the response to that question, thank you. Um, I would like to speak, um, in support of, of the, the total motion and the alternate motion. Um, we certainly need to do more work, um, in terms of the, uh, the funding of these types of proposals. It's not just simply, um, to say that we need these things, and we do. Um, how we actually fund it is, of course, an important thing. Um, we're all painfully aware of our rate capping and how that's sending us, um, in, into, uh, putting us, despite the fact our financial report's great, um, we do want to do more, and, um, how we fund that i- is a critical component. We just can't look at the, um, the concern we have in open space. We've also got to be very mindful of the package of how we actually fund that work. We need to do the hard work, not just the, uh, the nice work in that sense. So I, I'd, I'd support this, a- and I see it as being a part of that package of develop- of reviewing the development contributions, reviewing the open space contributions that comes from, um, the, the ongoing multi-dwelling development, um, multi-unit development that we're approving in this municipality, the vast amount of, uh, work we see in our, um, uh, going through our planning department. All of those sort of things is generating, particularly where it, it fits into residential, um, unit development that's making these contributions. All of that is helping potentially to fund that, and I think it's quite clear from what's being said that that gives us, gives us a stream of income to look at addressing those matters in the future. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Congrie?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I have to profess, I'm not really sure if I support or don't support this at this point. Um, I'm looking through the motion as it stands, and some of the items in here, I feel, have been addressed in this report already. It talks about maps and sizes of playgrounds and parklands in each ward, we've, we've got that provided here. Um, outlines council's policy regarding development and maintenance, it's part of our Better Parks Plan, um, details the level of investment in these parks. I, I get really, um, scared about outlining investment per park, per ward, because it just leads to challenges and, and in my belief, it's, we need to take a holistic Brimbank view, not a ward-based view. Um, the other thing that's just wearing on me is the draft policy for open space and parkland procurement. I just wonder whether developing, developing another policy, which will take a long amount of time, cost us money and the ratepayers money, is it needed or can we address it through another method? I.e., there's a whole heap of stuff in here around what, how we plan to deal with this matter. So I just don't know if we need that bureaucracy of creating another policy and what that's going to achieve. I understand what councillor Headige is asking for in terms of putting that all in one document, but I don't think we need a policy to do that. Like surely there's some other way that we could do it. Um, and then talking about a North Sunshine Open Space and Parklands Deficit Reduction Action Plan, isn't that what's here? The, the council officers have already outlined what the planning is, what the options are and what we intend to do. I'm not sure what else we're asking for in this space. I just get, I'm just concerned that this alternate motion will result in a whole lot of work and actually be detrimental this, to this process, because it will hold it up. Um, the creation of new policies, going out for consultation, all that sort of stuff. So that's, that's my concern. I agree with everything that's been said, and we need to fix the open space deficit in Sunshine. Um, when you look at the maps, it's actually pretty good across Brimbank, except in, in those areas, I think there's only four pockets that identified small open space deficits in accordance with our current policy. So for me, um, I think we've already said it all, I'm, I'm just a bit confused, I'm sorry, councillor Headige. Yeah, thank you.
So you're against?
I'm against it from, um-
Okay. I understand where you're coming from.
Perspective.
Thank you. Okay, any other speakers? All right. Councillor Headige, you've got the right to reply.
Thank you. Uh, I hear councillor Congrie's concerns, and I note the officer's, uh, recommendations to us that, that, uh, a lot of this has been covered in various, um, ways, uh, with existing plans and policies. Uh, I take the view that, uh, those policies and plans have been in place for a long time, and we've been using them to, uh, develop our parks and playgrounds all around the city, and we have this outcome in North Sunshine. It has not worked for us. We don't have a clear policy around how we're going to procure open space and parkland into the future at all. Uh, we have no, we have no clear policy on that. We rely on some fairly, what I see, nebulous comments that are made, and that, to me, needs some sharpening up. We do need to put some clear policy in place so that it can happen, and it can happen in a certain way that everyone understands. Um, at the moment, that's not there in my view. Uh, we don't have an appetite for procuring land around here at all, and we don't have an appetite for putting in place, um, overlays. We've seen that happen at Sunvale, uh, with a couple of, uh, blocks that we saw at Sunvale, and the lack of appetite to put in place planning overlays and so on. So we have a lot of maybes, and we have a lot of ifs, but we don't have any real clarity going forward about how all this might roll out. We're talking about reclassifications of various parks. The Northumberland Road Park is a tiny park that is going to be upgraded, an additional furniture and that equip- equipment added, but it's treed out at the moment, uh, it's very small, it will still be as inaccessible in, as a location to the people that are missing out down the western end of North Sunshine as it is today, despite the upgrade. We, we, we have, uh, a whole range of potential options around pa- around partnerships with schools, but which ones? We don't know. That's why the action plan's needed, so that we start to spell out what we're actually proposing to the people of North Sunshine, who can read a report like this one and see various, um, aspects identified, but they have no idea on what the combination looks like.
Thank you, councillor Headige, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, councillors, we need to vote on the alternate motion. Uh, those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Those against? Passed. Okay. Thank you. Um, item number twelve point one-three, Final Draft Albion Station Precinct Urban Design Principles. Mr Whiteside, could you please present us with a report?
Uh, certainly. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this is, this report is for council to consider adopting the final draft Albion Station Precinct Urban Design Principles, uh, at attachment one to the report. Following council endorsement at the ordinary council meeting on the nineteenth of November two thousand and nineteen, the draft urban design principles were released for community and stakeholder consultation for a four-week period ending twentieth December. Council received fourteen submissions in relation to the draft urban design principles. A summary of the issues raised in the submissions to the draft urban design principles, council officer considerations and recommendations is at attachment two to the report. Overall, there was strong support by the community for the draft urban design principles and the projects generally. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr Whiteside, are there any questions, councillors, or points of clarification? No. Do I have a mover? Councillor David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm of the report as Pender.
Thank you. Do I have a seconda? Councillor Headige? Uh, councillor David, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes. Uh, as councillor for the Connect and Brimbank portfolio, which covers all the things transport and trade, I'm pleased to talk about the final draft Albion Train Station Urban Design Principles. The plan to, plans to deliver the, to Melbourne Airport rail via Sunshine Station will have significant impact on the Albion Station precinct, which will probably need to be rebuilt as a result of the project. The draft of Albion Train Station Urban Design Principles have been prepared for council's consideration to inform all discussions with the state government concerning the planning, uh, planning, design and delivery of projects impacting the Albion Station precinct and immediately surrounding areas. The principles also help establish a consistent message for council. The draft urban design principles have been prepared, including creating a sense of place for the local community and a distinctive character specific to Albion, and ma- maximise economic development opportunities. Council is actively seeking community and stakeholder input about how Brimbank can benefit from projects like these. Community consultation is a very important part of the process. Madam Mayor, I commend this report to council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor David. Councillor Headige?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support what, uh, all that councillor David has said, and I, I would like to add that, um, I think one of the key themes that's come out is the, uh, connectivity for, uh, easy crossing of the railway line for pedestrians, cyclists and people, uh, particularly people on mobility support and, uh, with disabilities, and that, uh, I note the advice that we received that this been, this has been picked up in the urban design principles, and that, uh, we have, uh, I guess, a, a principle that's going to retain and upgrade existing upgrade pedestrian connections across the railway line and ensure the cross corridor connectivity is increased along the corridor. and ensure the cross corridor connectivity is increased along the corridor. I think the, um, Albion, uh, station, uh, urban design principles are really important. Uh, it's a fabulous iconic station with a fabulous John Darling Flower Mills beside it and a fabulous substation beside it. Uh, I was talking to one of the local MPs about it, uh, at the Sunshine R S L Centenary. And, uh, they were commenting on what a fantastic asset it is and how good would it be to see all of that come together in the next decade or so as, uh, as this city of ours develops. And for me, uh, I think, uh, the urban design principles have been worked up with community. There's been a lot of comment back, most of it positive. Uh, a couple of suggestions for change, that some of it have been taken up and some, some have been considered as already within and so on. But the, the key point of the urban design principles is that they give, uh, all those involved in this, uh, this exercise over the next decade or so, a, a, a background, a framework, um, a set of requirements from community and council for proper development of the Albion precinct and that's what we want to see happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other councillors that would like to speak to this report? No, all right, I'll put it to a vote. Those in favour? Against, carried. Thank you. Uh, twelve point one four, final draft Sunshine to Melbourne Airport Rail Corridor Urban Design Principles. Mister Whiteside, could you please brief us?
Uh, certainly. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, similar to the previous report, uh, this report is for council to consider adopting the final draft Sunshine to Melbourne Airport Rail Corridor Urban Design Principles, uh, at attachment one to the report. Uh, following the council endorsement at the ordinary council meeting on the nineteenth of November, uh, the draft urban design principles were released for, uh, community consultation for a four-week period, ending on the twentieth of December. Council received eight submissions in relation to the draft, uh, urban design principles. Summary of the issues raised, uh, in the submissions, uh, the officer consideration and recommendations is at attachment two. Uh, overall, there was also strong support for the community for the draft urban design principles and the projects generally. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? No. Could I please have a mover?
I'm of the reporter's opinion, Madam Mayor.
Councillor David, thank you. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Headitch. Councillor David, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, it's similar to what I read earlier. Uh, the Melbourne Airport rail link combined with the Western Rail Plan in suburban rail loop province, providing council with a great opportunity to consider, assist, engage and advocate for support of the key actions and create economic and social benefits to Brimbank. Uh, following community consultation, the final draft Sunshine to Melbourne Airport, uh, rail corridor urban design principles will guide and assist in informing discussions and advocacy, advocacy with the state government concerning the planning, design and delivery of all projects along the rail corridor. This is another significant and important project to Brimbank, Madam Mayor. And, uh, as to, um, as to report, um, this report rather contains some more than twenty urban design principles and I urge my fellow councillors to read it. They're very, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Headitch?
Uh, very briefly, Madam Mayor, uh, these are overarching, uh, principles that, uh, sit across uh, much of the other work that's gone on along the corridor. Uh, I welcome them. I think they're important. Uh, we have a lot to, uh, I guess, put in place in this community as these, uh, these rail projects develop. Uh, and, uh, these are the sorts of principles we need to, uh, make things happen the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors. Do I have any other speakers? I'll put it to a vote. Those in favour? Against, carried. Thank you. Twelve point one five, uh, review of municipal emergency management plan twenty twenty. Mister Whiteside?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this report is for council to consider adopting the revised municipal emergency management plan, including the community management risk assessment and the municipal emergency management planning committee terms of reference. Uh, the preparation and ongoing review of these documents is an integral part of council's emergency management responsibilities. Uh, these documents have recently been updated with assistance of members of the municipal emergency planning committee, uh, who endorsed the revised documents at their meeting on the fifth of December, two thousand and nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? No. Could I please have a mover?
Stay moved, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Goodie-Chair, could I please have a seconder? Councillor Tarkos? Uh, councillor Goodie-Chair?
Uh, just simply to say a few words, Madam Mayor. I think, um, Mister Whiteside said it all. Um, it's a great committee to be on. It's actually very, it's a very different committee to all the other committees of council. And I know that you and I both enjoy being on that committee very much. Um, there is much discussion about emergencies and, um, all the different risks and whatever, and I'm glad to say that we really haven't experienced any of them, so, but we are very well prepared. So I commend the report to council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tarkos.
Madam Mayor, just to, um, say again, as, uh, uh, councillor Judas just said, but I, I believe that it is quite a responsive, um, uh, committee. And some of the things that I can see on here that have already been encountered even within the same day, extreme heat, flooding, you know, you name it, it's all happening at the moment with extreme, um, we- we- weathers. But also the human epidemic and the pandemic that's happening at the moment, that as we know has, um, impacted us locally as well. I commend the report and I commend the effort that's put into addressing these very important and significant events. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers for this report? I'd just like to ha, um, add, it, it is a comprehensive, um, plan and thank you to Tom and his team. Um, all right, I'll put it, um, to a vote. Those in favour? Against, carried. Thank you. Okay, twelve point one six, the St Albans Leisure Centre Replacement Health and Wellbeing Hub Project, February twenty twenty update. Mister Whiteside, could you please present us with the report?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, certainly. Uh, this report is to provide council an update on the St Albans Leisure Centre Replacement Project. Uh, and for council to consider endorsing the St Albans Leisure Centre Replacement Design Development Report, which is at attachment one to the report. Uh, the project has reached a key milestone with the completion of the design development phase. Uh, and also the expression of interest for the tender for the design and construction contractor. Uh, subject to council endorsement of the design development report at tonight's council meeting, the next phase of the project will see the release of the tender documentation. And subject to council awarding the design and construction contract, contract, construction is due to commence mid twenty twenty. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Okay.
Question, just, um, can council officers please just provide us with the status of the project funding? In terms of, um, government and external private funding and where that process is at and what the plan is for that.
Uh, thank you councillor. Um, so at the moment, um, the funding for the pool, it would be wholly responsi, the responsibility of council at the moment. So there's been no further funding.
Yes, count, uh, Alan?
I threw the chair. I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention that on Friday, the fourteenth, Valentine's Day, we submitted our application to the state government, um, and, uh, we're hoping for positive result. In not only did, when we submitted the application, we also had over thirty letters of support, including from the local members as well.
And, um, sorry, Ms Moranty, what is the potential funding available under that scheme?
Two million.
Thank you. And my, my other question was around private funding and how we've managed to progress that through private potential private models. How's that progressing?
Certainly, um, councillors may recall there was a notice of motion moved in the October council meeting which requested a report back to council in regards to the exploration of alternative funding streams for major capital works projects. Um, and that I take it would include the St Albans Leisure Centre redevelopment. Um, that report is due to come back to council at next month's council meeting. Um, and further to that, at a council of planning day for the development of council's budget process, there'll be a discussion around um, that particular analysis. Um, there has been some approaches or to private um, businesses in regards to potential sponsorship opportunities, but they're very early investigative, uh, discussions. Um, so at this stage, there would be, um, nothing that would be appropriate to report at this stage.
Any other questions, councillors? Could I please have a mover?
I'll move them. Recommendation is printed in the business papers. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Goodie-Chair. Could, do I have a seconder? Councillor Tarkos? Councillor Goodie-Chair, would you like to speak to the motion?
A few words, Madam Mayor. I know that the St Albans Leisure Centre has been spoken about quite a lot by this council and I welcome this, I don't know, twelve, thirteenth, fourteenth report, I'm not quite sure. But, um, it's certainly a welcome report and does show that this council has actually progressed this project quite a bit. It will probably be the first time that I actually look forward to a closure of something. So then I can look forward to the opening of it later on. Um, there's certainly a lot of excitement out there in the community about this facility. Uh, it's widely spoken about in the community and often I get stopped in shopping centres asking me what the progress of this, um, uh, uh, project is and I think that we can start to openly speak about these timelines. Um, the excitement about this extraordinary project, I just wish was shared by state and federal governments as well. So I urge you, Madam Mayor and councillor Tarkos, when you go to Canberra, to be very excited about this project so that, uh, that excitement may actually be impressed upon others and we may receive some significant funding. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tarkos.
I sharing that excitement and, um, very excited about going to Canberra to share that excitement as well. Um, it's time to proceed with this tender. Uh, it, this is a much-needed project. We're all aware of that. Our advocacy, with my advocacy hat on, um, the evidence base for this health and wellbeing hub, um, after seeing the recent fly-through as well, uh, we've got the evidence there that this is the most neediest, um, area in, uh, possibly Victoria that needs this project. A project that represents innovation, integrated service delivery and addresses a broad suite of barriers of our community uh, that they face, but in a respectful, safe, state-of-the-art setting. This council, both myself and the mayor are absolutely committed to when we go to Canberra, that we will engage, uh, with, with the federal, um, politicians there to discuss the importance of partnerships. Because it's when we partner with our state and our federal that we get the best outcomes of all. Um, this health and wellbeing hub will be the first of its ki- kind. And what I explain to people, it's not just about the pool. It's not just about a slide. It's actually, uh, connecting people and also transforming people's lives, teaching new skills so that people feel empowered and resilient. That's what our people need. Our people deserve it. Let's build it.
Thank you, councillor Tarkos. Any other speakers fall? Okay, um, I'll put it to the vote. Those in? Okay, councillor Headitch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I, I stand, uh, very torn here. We know, uh, uh, that the St Albans area, as we saw from the social health atlas and the article in the Age on the Weekend, is, uh, the most inactive in Victoria. It is a high-needs area. It also has a lot of really good things happening in St Albans. It's a great place. And we have its strengths, but we have its facts, which are that it is inactive. It needs facilities like this. It really needs them. It needs other facilities as well and as councillor Tarkos has mentioned earlier, there's great things happening at Errington and various other places that will help. And council's more than, uh, batting above its weight with all of this. Uh, for me though, the high needs are offset by the lousy, low, well, non-existent funding that's come from the state and federal governments and from others who could be making contributions to this. We go into this project, go to tender with this community, resident ratepayers of this community coughing up the lot. And that, in my view, is inappropriate. We should not be doing this. We're off to Canberra. There's been a sports roads programme go on. Fifteen million dollars has gone to Kerrangamite down the road and to various other places from the federal government. And we've had a state election go on where ten million went here and ten million went there to marginal seats, but we haven't got a cracker. We've got an application in for two million. That's, it still leaves a really big hole. And it leaves a legacy for the next council to take on and for the opportunities to do other things are minimized by the absence of the funding that we should have got. For me, I want, I wanted to be going into this position with twenty-five million bucks from the state and federal governments in the bank. And that we had a project that we originally agreed should have that sort of money in it from other partners, but which now has none. And for me, that is not the way you do good business with these major projects. You have to have financial parameters around them from the start that say if you don't achieve your goals around uh, partnership funding and things like that, you wait until you get that because this is really important and high need and I understand the urgency of it, but to actually lose your leverage by going to tender and accepting a tender and going out with no funding from the Commonwealth Government at all, a potential two million from the state government, we are left with a huge hole. There may be others from sponsorship as we mentioned, but they're early stage, nothing's happening in that space and hasn't been happening for a long time. So for me, the financial legacy of this project is that opportunity costs down the track for future councils to do things like libraries, like sports stadiums, like all sorts of women's facilities and various other things are going to be limited because of the impact of this project. So for me, I think that the project-
Thank you councillor Headitch.
Pegasus?
Your time's up. Thank you. Okay, uh, councillor Congreve?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and, um, thank you councillor Headitch for your, your views on this, um, issue. And I have to say that I genuinely accept them. I, I'm really excited about this project, but I'm not excited about paying for it. Which is really most things in life, to be honest. Um, I think that we're right at this point in time, too far down the line to pull it out and that there is a community expectation and there is a number of people in the community who are really, really looking forward to this project being delivered. We're not at a point that we can pull it back or de-scale it or do any of those things right now. And our people deserve it, frankly. They deserve to have a wonderful facility. Um, for me, and my questions earlier around the funding was around, we do, we, you know, we acknowledge that we need that federal funding. We've, you know, we've got the mayor and councillor Tarkos going up to Canberra. And I think that if anything, the sports road scandal gives us a little bit of leverage here to go, hang on, where's the fair guy for Brimbank? Because, you know, as I mentioned earlier, that was at the exact same time that we were asking for money. And a council that didn't ask for any money got a nice little cheque for fifteen million bucks. Like, it's, it's just poor and it doesn't make the, it doesn't make the pub test in any sense of the imagination. Um, but for me, what this says is, we're proceeding, we're committed, we're going forward and we have to make sure that our plans and our processes and our attempts at getting money from everywhere possible, uh, are in train. Um, so we know we've got a grant in there that's going to give us two million bucks that won't give me a dip in the ocean. But what else is out there and where's the private funding coming from? Where are our partners? That sort of thing. So I'm keen to see what the, the report that comes back, um, in March says on that item, but right now, we're committed, we're going forward. And from all accounts, when you look at it, it's a wonderful facility. You know, um, so, you know, I, I accept we're in debate, councillor Headitch. So, um, you know, thank you for putting forward your views. I, I agree, but I think that we're too far forward and we need to accept this proposal and move forward.
Thank you councillor Congreve. Um, any other councillors? Uh, councillor Lancashire?
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor. Um, just to reiterate the great things that have been said about this exciting facility for our community. It is an area of, uh, considerable need within the community. We must do it. Um, we've been working on this for quite some time. Um, we have been very careful with our budget to ensure that we can, um, go ahead with this development and fund it. And, uh, we certainly wish those that are going to Canberra, um, uh, the best in, in, in lobbying for funding and all that. Um, and that they have good advice from, um, uh, the officers on how to go about that. Uh, that we approach it in a very positive sense, um, and sell the good aspects of it, how it could be highly beneficial to this municipality. So thank you, Madam Mayor, and I think this is a great project to support.
Thank you, councillor Farm.
Um, I, uh, understand our, um, difficult situation in financial um, status at the moment, but what I'm seeing that we're spending and investing in our own people health. I've been going there and seeing a lot of elderly, especially in St Albans. Um, going to St Albans Leisure Centre almost every day at their second home. Conversation started, you know, um, supporting- Conversation started, you know, supporting each other and also going to the gym, getting rehab, getting better health, you know. On the other hand, on my first year council, I went and made a speech at St Albans Leisure Centre, seeing a wall cracking in the office. I was stopping sitting in a cracking wall office to work. Have everyone seen that? It's not safe at all and, you know, it's not hygiene. Our lady been walking through the door with their bikinis, with their beta, through the entrance. How good does that look? So I'm thinking, well, okay, we are in a very difficult situation, but have you considering people feeling? Have you considering the comment that they make? One of the comment that one elderly met, which I never forget was, I don't think in my whole life, even maybe when I pass away, I see this play being rebuilt. So that's how long they've been waiting for. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Farm. Any other speakers? Or I'll put this, councillor David.
Madam Mayor, just a couple of words. I must have heard the word exciting quite a number of times in life. And the last part that I liked was the committed. And indeed, we have been committed. And I'm looking to any investment in life, if we don't do it today, it costs us more millions to come tomorrow. So we have to go ahead and do it. It's something that we, the officers and council have been working for quite a long time now and I think we have to go ahead and do it. I'll support the recommendation.
Thank you, councillor David. Okay, councillor Goodrich, you've got the right to reply.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I thank my fellow councillors for the contagion on the excitement, so it seems to be contagious. Madam Mayor, what can I say? This report has come to council now for the last three years or so. It's always been endorsed, almost unanimously most of the time. There has been much discussion about the financial risk and, you know, that we don't have the funding. It's early days yet. We may receive some funding, but if we don't, I do believe that this council is willing to take that financial risk to actually fund this project ourselves. And I know we've had numerous, numerous briefings by our financial team telling us what's going to happen into the future. Councillor Headige is always talking about low risk. We're a low-risk council. Or perhaps this project will actually lift us in the medium-risk council. And if being raised to a medium-risk council means that we are going to be delivering this project for valuable residents who have used this valuable facility for fifty years, then I believe that we're willing to take that risk. So I endorse the report, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, councillors, I'll put this to a vote. Those in favour? Against? Carried. Okay. Councillors, as a decision has been made for this facility
Yes.
and given the importance of the redevelopment of the St Albans Leisure Centre to our community, I would also like to say a few words from the chair. I am also pleased to re-announce that last Friday, council officers submitted an application to the state government to help fund this development. The application was forty-one pages in length, plus eighty-five separate attachments, including twenty individual letters of support from organisations such as Western Health, Community Plus, WEMIDA, Women's Health West, Life Saving Victoria, IPC Health, Swimming Victoria, Youth Now, the Les Twentiman Foundation and the Ethnic Councils of Victoria, amongst many others. I would really like to take this opportunity to thank the officers for their significant work. I also thank the many organisations that are supporting our bid. I think this demonstrates how successful we have been in working to build good, strong relationships across the board. I would also like to acknowledge our local members of parliament, including Daniel Molino, federal member for Fraser, and Natalie Solomon, state member for St Albans, who also lent their weight and support to this application. And my fellow resilient portfolio councillor, Virginia Tarkos, who has attended the meetings with me to gain support for our application. As mayor, I'm fortunate to work closely with both members and many community organisations that are committed to working together positively with all our partners for many years to come. And this will continue under my term as mayor. I'm hopeful that our efforts to date will pay off and fingers crossed that in the not-too-distant future, we can share some further good news. Thank you for your indulgence, councillors. I thought it's important that we reaffirm this. Council's shared commitment to positive working relationships with all stakeholders and all levels of government is important, particularly while we pursue funding for intergenerational community assets. Thank you. Okay, before we go on to the next item, councillors, our meeting procedure requires us to vote to continue this meeting beyond ten o'clock. So do I have a mover for a motion to extend this meeting for a further thirty minutes? Councillor Goodrich, do I have a seconda? Councillor Tarkos. All in favour? Against? Carried. Thank you. Okay. Councillors, I would like to say a few words about the next report, twelve point one seven, which is the draft women's participation in sport and active recreation in Melbourne's West. Action Plan for Change, twenty twenty to twenty twenty five. So I will be requesting a mover for motion for a temporary chair. Can I have a mover for a motion for a temporary chair, please? Councillor Goodrich? Councillor David? Councillor Goodrich, could you just state the motion?
As printed in the business papers, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All those in favour? Against? Carried. Thank you.
Item twelve point seventeen, Grab Woman Participation in Sport Action Plan, Jan. twenty twenty, twenty twenty five. Cat Packes, could you please present the report? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. The purpose of this report is for councils to consider endorsing the draft women's participation in sport and active recreation in Melbourne's West Action Plan for Change, two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty five, as an attachment one to the report for community consultation. Women and girls in the western region of Melbourne are underrepresented in sports and active recreation. The draft action plan provides strategic direction to western region councils on challenging and addressing the gender barriers to women and girls' participation and representation. The draft action plan is consistent with a number of council adopted strategies and plans, which seeks to address the imbalance of opportunities, representation and access by women and girls.
Thank you. Councillor, are there any question or clarification? Sorry, cali- clarification? No. Do I have the mover? Thank you, Mayor. Do I have the seconda? Councillor Vitaw? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. Last December, at a combined Brimbank People and Healthy Brimbank Portfolio Meeting, councillor Borg and I were very, very pleased to learn about the Women's Participation in Sport and Active Recreation in Melbourne's West Action Plan for Change, twenty twenty to twenty twenty five. Brimbank has partnered with six councils in Melbourne's West, Women's Health West and Sport and Recreation Victoria to develop the draft action plan. During my term as mayor, I will be focusing on how council can work with the state government, the federal government and other stakeholders to help improve access to sporting facilities and active recreation for girls and women. As outlined in the Transforming Brimbank twenty twenty agenda, I will continue to lead council's advocacy around the need to not only secure funding for more female-friendly change rooms, but also for the new St Albans Health and Wellbeing Hub and the proposed Home of Matildas at Sydenham Park. The Home of the Matildas, in particular, provides the opportunity for Brimbank to potentially become the home of girls and women's sport in Melbourne's West. More than just a sporting facility, it will provide new and unprecedented opportunities for our community grassroots clubs in terms of facilities and pathways, as well as educational opportunities for girls and women to learn about sports science, physiology and much more. So I look forward to advocating on these opportunities during my time as mayor, which are consistent with this action plan and the Transforming Brimbank agenda. So I commend this report. Thank you.
Thank you. Could the second like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the people portfolio, it gives me great pleasure to see the draft of this action plan coming to council. Research shows that women and girls in the western region of Melbourne are underrepresented in sports and active recreation more than all other regions of Melbourne. The draft action plan provides strategic direction to western region councils on challenging the gendered barriers to women and girls' participation in sport and active recreation. The draft action plan presents a vision, five strategic directions and forty-eight actions that councils can take in collaboration with a range of partners, including sporting clubs, sport and recreation providers, community clubs and groups, state and national sporting associations, Women's Health West and Victorian government agencies. The draft action plan has been developed so its implementation can be integrated into each council's relevant strategies, policies and plans. The draft action plan will inform the delivery of existing Brimbank initiatives that support the strategic priorities of the draft action plan, including the Active Brimbank, Brimbank Female Football Festival, Into Tennis and Into Active, Sports Club Development Training, Sports Club allocations and fees and charges, female-friendly infrastructure upgrades, Daughters of the West and Respect Victoria, Respect Women, Call It Out campaign. The draft action plan will also assist with identifying opportunities and planning a new initiatives. The draft action plan will be monitored through annual reviews by the project partners to assess progress in delivering the action plan. A three-year midterm evaluation will be conducted in two thousand and twenty-three and a full review in two thousand and twenty-five to inform the development of a new five-year action plan. I would like to thank everyone involved in the development of this draft action plan and look forward to the community's feedback to this draft. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Any other councillor want to speak?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, councillor Tron. So I'm conscious we're going to have a lot of time, but I think that it's really important to celebrate the wonderful things that are happening in this report because it's truly going to be life-changing for many women in this area. When I was looking through the report and looking at some of the recommendations, I found myself nodding my head because as a mum of two with a full-time job, I've experienced many of these things myself. It talks about different strategic options and some of the issues. It talks about childcare being a significant consideration. There's a quote from a mum talking about her kids crying on the sidelines as she tries to do a little bit of exercise. Like, there's so many people that could relate to that in our community. It talks about the design and access to facilities and hours of operation and safety, you know. We're building St Albans Leisure Centre with a twenty-four hour gym and that's really great for mums who have to go to the gym when the kids go to bed. So dad's at home with the kids and they're going to the gym, but we need to make sure they're safe and welcoming and accessible. Part three talks about safety, it talks about increased lighting on pass and that's so important. We've all experienced that. We need to feel happy and safe when we're doing this. And then party four talks about programming and costs and I actually don't think this is gender-specific. I think that this is just a topic for the West. I know that, you know, just for me, my daughter does swimming and a toddler sports programme, it's two hundred and fifty bucks a month just for her to do that. If that's a reality for many people in our municipality, that's a real concern. If it's the difference between your kids doing sport and putting food on the table or girls doing sport and putting food on the table, food will and should win every time. So if we're going to take some measures to fix that, then, you know, we should welcome that. So I commend the report to councillors, fantastic work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Farm?
I have to say, this is a great action plan as I came across a few programs which were either fully funded or partnership between Brimbank and our partners, that also including Daughter of the West, which I see anonymous amount of women that coming there from different backgrounds also. Some of them have been a bit of disability. And I, well, I never see anyone not participating in those activities. So that was a very great program. Then I came across to some sport club and actually seeing the new group of women exercising, for example, table tennis, which would never happen before. And I guess that's a big change. Remember back when I was young, like, I wouldn't have no chances of going to play sport because as a girl, you support a stay-home and cook and help your mum. It's now changed, so, you know, we are provided a lot more opportunity to to go to different places, join low fee or free of charge programs which improve our health and, you know, reduce our isolation, which is really great. Thank you.
Any? Okay. So I will put to the vote, any of, councillor David, would you like to speak?
Madam Chair, David May. Look, I just just cited something on the attachments here and it's to do with delayed coffee amount. Secretary General of United Nations. In my lifetime, that's the best secretary general I can remember. And I wanted to say, sport is a universal language. At its best, it can bring people together, no matter what their origin, background, religions, beliefs or economic status. Now, I was always a great believer myself, growing up in sports, to encourage today, mums, grandmothers and parents, as in general, to encourage their kids, grandchildren and all, take a sport. Regardless of any choice of sport, it'll make those kids better people tomorrow. Together, they learn to, as a team, they make decisions together, discipline and all those things that perhaps makes a good human being later on in life. Not all of them will make the grade, but the majority of those kids, it'll be good citizens for tomorrow. And wonderful report before us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillor wanted to speak? Thank you. Okay, I will put to the vote, all in favour again. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, councillors, just a reminder that we do need to finish before eleven and we do have quite a few reports and items to get through. Okay. We're up to item twelve point one eight, Children's Plan 2015 to 2019 Community Report Card. Cath Brackett, could you please present this report?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The purpose of this report is for council to note the Children's Plan 2015 to nineteen Community Report Card at attachment one to the report. The Children's Plan Community Report Card provides just a high-level snapshot of council's key achievements for the last four years, two thousand fifteen to nineteen, which is the life of the current Children's Plan. It demonstrates council's ongoing commitment to the development and coordination of educational care and health programmes for children and activities in other local developments for children and their families in the municipality. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or points of clarification? Councillors? No? All right. Could I please have a mover? Councillor Borg and a second, councillor Congreve. Thank you. Councillor Borg?
Thank you, Mother Mayor. As champion of the Brimbank People Portfolio, I'm pleased to speak about the Draft Children's Plan two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen Community Report Card. Shortly, I will also speak to the Draft Children's Strategy two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-four, which aims to reflect the experiences, ideas and aspirations of children, families and community organisations in Brimbank. The Draft Children's Plan two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen Community Report Card recognises the key achievements over the life of the Brimbank's Children's Plan two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen. The achievements can be attributed to our strong partnerships and collaborations that have provided a key vehicle for improving service access and responsiveness, such as through Tweedle Child and Family Health, the Smith family, et cetera. Council's commitment to improving the outcomes for all Brimbank families and children has also enabled innovative, accessible and responsive initiatives to be implemented, such as the DAS programmes, the mobile outreach bus and the appointment of a family violence practitioner. These successful initiatives developed during the life of the plan have continued to prove popular with families and service providers. I commend this report card to council.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Councillor Congreve?
Thank you, Madame Mayor. And again, I'm conscious we're short of time, but I'm conscious this needs to be given the airtime it deserves because it's a wonderful piece of work. So I echo everything that councillor Borg said. There's some really wonderful results in here and I want to say thanks to our staff and to Ms Brackett's team who do amazing work in this space. The birth rates are up, there's more births coming into Brimbank and we know we know we've got challenges. We know we've got lots of family violence, violence, high levels of family violence, but to see that we've been able to support over two hundred families with care packages through this process is absolutely fantastic. Breastfeeding near indeed to my heart, three hundred women have used that service. We know that has long-term benefits for both mum and baby in that 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 is proven over time and over the life of the child. So for me to have been a part of that and been able to, well, not a part of it, but approving it and bringing that programme in, it's been a wonderful initiative for us. And to think that as a councillor, we've been able to help these women and these families, for me, that's really, really special. So, you know, as the saying goes, it takes a village to raise a child and I'm really proud to be part of this village. So I commend the report to council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Congreve. Any other speakers? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. Those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. Next report is twelve point one nine, Draft Children's Strategy twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four. Cath Brackett again. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. This report is for council to consider endorsing the Draft Children's Strategy twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four for community consultation and the strategy at attachment one to the report. The strategy has been deeply informed by the voice of children. More than three hundred and fifty children in kindergarten and school settings contributed their ideas and in addition, eighty-two parents or carers and forty external and internal stakeholders also participate in a series of focus groups and workshops. The draft strategy aims to raise the importance of the voice of children and has an emphasis on parents as the child's first and most influential educator. It's recommended that council endorse the draft strategy for a period of community consultation.
Thank you, Cath. Any questions or points of clarification, councillors? Okay, could I please have a mover? Councillor Borg, a second, councillor Tron. Councillor Borg, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mother Mayor. The Draft Children's Strategy two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-four aims to strengthen support for all families during the formative years of their children's lives, bolstering parent capacity to be their child's first and most influential educator. The strategy also reinforces council's ongoing commitment to providing child-centred service and valuing the important role families play in a child's development. It is important to note that the strategy is underpinned by the United Nations Convention on the Rights of the Child and the Victorian Child Friendly Cities and Community Charter. The strategy focuses on children up to the age of nine years and their parents, carers and service providers in Brimbank. A comprehensive consultation process was undertaken with children and their families and also included over twenty-two partner entities. The process ensured the voices of children were prominent and are one of the key drivers of the strategy. An action plan has been developed to complement the strategy, which will also include a focus on the environment, conservation and sustainability, access to support and services for all families and respond to the developmental disadvantage and vulnerability. The proposed draft strategy aims to reflect the experiences, ideas and aspirations of children, families and community organisations in Brimbank and intends to improve the outcomes for families and children. I commend this report to council.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Councillor Tron?
Yes, thank you, Mother Mayor. First, I would like to thank you for the order spot, it's a put that on to ride the bus. But I would like to put the attention in, we all know in Brimbank, we have a lot members of ethnic community, especially if we have a lot of new arrivals, new mother and they have the young children. Also, it's a barrier of the language, so they don't know all the provide of the service that available in our area. So I think if we can mention or have in a different language to encourage is more model with the young children to get involved. Also, we need to support. I have some feedback, especially with the ethnic community like Sudanese. They are concerned about, they need help for tutor for the children after school after school care and the mother can some of mother, they would like to go to work, but they worry about the children after school. So if we can keep an eye on this attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillors that would like to speak? All right. I'll put the motion to a vote. Those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. The next report, twelve point two zero, Draft Youth Strategy twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four. Cath Brackett, would you please present this as well?
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of this report is for council to consider endorsing the Draft Youth Strategy two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-four for community consultation again at attachment one to the report. The draft strategy reflects experience, knowledge, ideas and aspirations of young people and the key stakeholders supporting them. Again, over three hundred young people and a hundred and forty stakeholders contributed their ideas to the draft. The draft strategy focuses on young people aged ten to twenty-five years, but this time we have a specific focus in the middle years, the ten to twelve years, a time of significant transition. The draft strategy recognises the pivotal role that young people play in shaping our communities now into the future and we offer recommendations to council endorse the draft consultation.
Thank you, Cath. Any questions or points of clarification, councillors? No? Could I please have a mover? Councillor Borg, a second. Councillor Farm. Thank you. Councillor Borg?
Thank you, Mother Mayor. As champion of the Brimbank People Portfolio, I am pleased to speak about the Draft Youth Strategy two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-four and shortly, the Youth Strategy two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen Report Card. The vision for this strategy reminds us that young people need to have access to ongoing opportunities for empowerment and active collaboration, enabling them to respond to evolving trends and thrive in their communities. The age range for this strategy is ten to twenty-five years. However, there is a focus on young people aged ten to twelve middle years in this strategy because there is little support provided for this age range, despite this period being one of significant transition from primary to secondary school, along with rapid physical and mental development. The guiding principles behind this strategy include being committed to excellence in practice, being strengths-based and being innovative, creative and open to new approaches. New aspects of the strategy focus on participation and influence, health and wellbeing, transitions, education and employment. To develop this strategy, over three hundred young people participated in consultation and over seventy participants representing services ranging from state and federal government, specialist providers of youth services and other LGA youth services. In a rapidly changing world, young people are facing challenges and opportunities very different to generations before them. The strategy recognises the key role young people play in shaping our communities and society now and into the future and will support council officers in developing a practice that will be able to respond to the needs of our young people. I would like to commend this report to council.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Councillor Farm?
Just a quick comment that it's great to see that we, at Brimbank, we acknowledge the need of support in Brimbank's residents in different ages and especially in both physical and mental sides. So really great that, you know, we have put this into the plan. Thank you.
Definitely an important document. Thank you. Any other speakers to this report? No? I'll put it to a vote. In favour, against, carried. Thank you. Now, councillors, before we continue, I need to ask for another extension for thirty minutes. Could I please have a mover? Councillor Goodrich, a second. Councillor Lancashire. Those in favour, against, thank you. All right. Move on to twelve point two one, Youth Strategy two thousand fourteen to two thousand nineteen Report Card. Cath Brackett, thank you.
Thanks, Chair. The purpose of this report is for the council to consider noting the draft two thousand eight and two thousand nineteen, so the annual report card for the current youth strategy at attachment one. The report card details the implementation, the actions, the strategies that have occurred over previous year and demonstrates the many programs, varied programs from young parent programs, counselling, social and support groups, learner driver training and programs supporting the youth voice. It's recommended council note the report card.
Thank you, Cath. Councillors, any questions or points of clarification? No? Okay. Could I please have a mover? Councillor Borg and a second, councillor Allen. Thank you. Councillor Borg?
Thank you, Mother Mayor. The review of two thousand fifteen nineteen Youth Strategy provided an opportunity to engage with the broader Melbourne youth sector and services ranging from state government departments, specialist youth service providers, through to other local government youth services. As part of the review, there was consultation with over three hundred young people looking at a range of focus areas such as youth recreation centres, barriers to employment, community hubs, libraries, ideas to act on climate change and youth participation and engagement. The four-year report card reflects the diversity of work undertaken through Brimbank Youth Services. In two thousand eighteen nineteen, action areas included some seven hundred and fifty young people engaged through youth support and counselling, Baby Steps and Young Parents Play Groups, Universal Access Disco, L2P Learner Driver Programme and School Holiday Programme Showbags. Partnerships developed with key stakeholders to support outreach, service delivery, engagement and recreation with vulnerable young people, including young people and family members at Sunshine Children's Court. Supporting LGBTQIA young people through social settings to develop connections and the sense of belonging in Brimbank. Some three hundred and forty-eight young people consulted, engaged and were leading change through varied initiatives such as local young community groups and young researchers. Valuable discussions were held across the sector about what a contemporary local government youth service could look like over the next five to ten years. I commend this report to council.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Councillor Allen? Would you like to say anything? Thank you. Any other speakers for this report? Okay, I'll put this motion to a vote. Those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. Item number twelve point two two, Building Brimbank Community Engagement Evaluation Report. Mr Walsh?
Thank you, Mother Mayor. This report presents to council the results of community engagement around the Building Brimbank Initiative, which is a key platform for the response strategy which is adopted by council. Councils asked to consider the report, endorse it and place it on exhibition for a period of a month. And in addition to that, provide it to state government agencies who are dealing with Sunshine.
Thank you. Councillors, any questions or points of clarification? Could I please have, councillor Congreve?
The exhibition for a month, I know that's the standard, but given the size and the amount of participants in this process, was there any consideration of making that a longer process? Are we trying to meet a deadline by doing it within four weeks?
Through you, Mother Mayor, we're open to council requesting further, a longer period.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a mover for this motion? Councillor Goodrich?
Move the motion as printed in the business papers. Thanks, Mother Mayor.
Do I have a second, councillor Takos? Councillor Goodrich, would you like?
Just briefly, Mother Mayor, it's an excellent report and one of the best that I've seen in my time. Great work has been done by all to formulate the community vision for Sunshine and the surrounds. It's a great advocacy tool which I'm sure will become the blueprint for our council in regards to the Marl, Western Rail Plan and the Super Hub. Fourteen items of feedback contributed to the strategy. Three expectations were identified, namely, ongoing conversations, managing change, local benefits. These three expectations will be foremost in this council's mind around this game-changing project. And I thank all the residents for their engagement on this strategy and anyone that will be submitting as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Takos, thank you.
Just what councillor Judich had covered off, but I just wanted to say that this is probably the most important, most significant collaborative piece of consultation work that I've ever seen this council undertake. And it's really hard for me to give it the justice in a short time, but I think it should be the lens that we look through all of our projects and the three things that councillor Judich said should be the lens that we look at, even the leisure centre, but everything. So congratulations to all those involved. I look forward to the community feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hiddage?
Very quickly, Mother Mayor, I congratulate the officers on the report and all the work that's gone in. Fabulous consultation. We've got a lot of, I guess, information, a lot of findings in section eight, which were great to read. a lot of findings in section eight, which were great to read. Uh, it's great that it's going out for a month's consultation, given that the community forum that was held down at BU, uh, didn't get the crowd we expected, but got a quality, uh, output from that crowd that was there. So, uh, it's great that it's going back out for a month of, uh, discussion and so on. Look forward to, uh, hearing the community feedback as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay. Put it to a vote. Those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. Uh, next, twelve point two three, submission to the draft flight path design priorities, uh, principles. It's getting very late. Uh, Mr Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Air Services Australia has completed national consultation about the draft flight path design principles. Um, officers have prepared a submission, um, and submitted that to Air Services, uh, by the required date, which was the seventh of February, um, sorry, the ninth of February, we'll put it in on the seventh. Uh, this council present, this report presents to council the officer's submission, um, and seeks council endorsement of that. Um, and also, uh, um, if you're of a mind to accept the officer recommendation, we would also advise Air Services Australia of your endorsement of that submission.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? No? Do I have a mover?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I have an amended motion that I'd like to put forward. Uh, I have got a submission of C and D. Um, I will not read it out for, to save time, but people can read it off the screen, uh, which, uh, those both C and D intend to, uh, tighten up the existing excellent, uh, recommendation by the officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, councillor Hiddage, would you like to speak to the motion, to the amended motion? Oh, sorry, you went this. Okay, it is getting very late. Okay, thank you. Councillor Hiddage, do you mind speaking to this, to the amended motion? Okay. Councillor Tarkos, would you like to speak to the amended motion, please?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report is to consider our council's submission to the Air Services National Consultation about the draft flight path design principles, uh, lodged on Friday the seventh of February two thousand twenty. Unfortunately, Air Services' timeframe did not afford us the time, uh, to bring this before council, before lodgment. What matters, though, is our council officers worked extremely hard to deliver a very, very comprehensive and excellent submission in a very, very tight timeline. I thank them immensely and commend them for, for doing this. Our council and our councillors via advocacy portfolio continue to highlight the range of concerns about noise and potential health impacts and other matters to Melbourne Airport, Air Services, and the federal government. Um, Madam Mayor, my first concern is the consultation, uh, process itself. Given the impact Melbourne Airport's proposed third runway will have on Brimbank, only one workshop was held in Melbourne on the twenty-ninth of January, which councils were afforded with a, 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 a workshop as well. But the, and they were given, um, a national online survey, and that was the level of consultation that they thought was appropriate for a community that is about, about to experience the most impact of flight paths, uh, changes in flight path orientation. Madam Mayor, put in simple terms, this is not good enough. Not only is it inadequate for our community, but the methodology around the online surveys that was provided was not suitable for our general community, including our called communities and disadvantaged communities. It's as if our communities, it's our voice, our views, our lives, don't seem to matter. Consultation conducted over Christmas period, when most people are taking a hard-earned break, and the survey was so technical, it was so skewed, and not really interested in eliciting views on flight principles, but a tool developed for people who would need some background and knowledge in aviation. We aren't pilots, but I, I feel like I'm dev- becoming one, with all the knowledge that's required of me to grasp the complexity of flight path design. Madam Mayor, there is also major deficiencies in the statutory framework, particularly in relation to land use planning and controls. Concerns continue to grow with the regulation of airspace and lack of information about repercussions, if any, when aircraft don't adhere to noise abatement procedures. It appears increasingly that the needs, the growth, and the profits of the aviation interest, industry are prioritised over and against the safety, amenity, and environmental impacts of our community here in Brimbank. My question to Air Services is, where do their draft principles intend to prioritise the impact of aircraft noise, specifically to residents beneath the flight paths, and night-time movements, and the long-term health impacts of those, um, uh, night-time movements? The impacts of aircraft noise on the learning environment on students who go to school beneath those flight paths, especially the early development of children, uh, and the impacts on cognitive development. The lack of noise monitors in Kilo Village to monitor aircraft noise impacts and their levels. Currently, no aviation agency monitors aviation noise impacts. The data from existing noise monitors are used for air services for other purposes. The need for a new legislated improved noise abatement framework that responds to community concerns due to the expansion and the lack of curfew, a thorough review of noise complaints framework is desperately needed. Finally, a programme of subsidised noise attenuation and mitigation, such as double glazing for schools and residencies that are going to be heavily impacted by the new north-south flight path, proposed flight path. Our community is looking to airport at, to the airport and air services for genuine engagement, proper transparent consultation, and noise abatement framework that is responsive to the community's concerns of increasing noise. I urge the council colleague, my councillor colleagues, to support the strengthening of the original excellent motion with this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tarkos. I believe councillor Hiddage is the seconder. Would you? Yes, thank you. Any other speakers? Right. I'll put the motion to a vote. Those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. Um, item twelve point two four, contract number eighteen forward slash two five one two P A, supply and delivery of bulk fuel extension of contract. Mr Whiteside?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, quite simply, this is an extension, uh, to existing contract for council's consideration. Thank you.
Any questions or points of clarification? No. Mr Hiddage? I moved, Mr councillor Hiddage. Councillor Congreve seconds it. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. All right. Item number thirteen, notices of motion. There are no notices of motion this evening. Item fourteen, notices of motion rescission. There are no rescission motions this evening. Okay. Item fifteen, urgent business. Um, CEO, is there any urgent business?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, there was. There was information received regarding the health of one of our residents and a desire to send some, uh, best wishes. The, um, the request was received pro- uh, post the printing of the council agenda, and the item was considered and considered to have met the requirements for an urgent business item.
Thank you. Uh... Through the chairs, through councillor Judy Chair?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just think we'd like to say, Madam Mayor, that I- On behalf of the council, I would like to send well wishes to one of our young residents, Bianca, who is currently in quarantine after being diagnosed with coronavirus. The remainder of her family are in isolation wards after being taken off the cruise ship, which is currently docked in the port of Yokohama. We trust that the family are under great care of the Japanese medical staff, and send our support and well wishes to the whole family during this trying time. A perhaps a card to her home, once we know that she's back, Madam Mayor, might be appropriate for us to send as counsel as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, item number sixteen, confidential business. There are three items of confidential business this evening. May I have a mover of a motion to close the meeting to members of the public for the consideration of confidential reports sixteen point one, sixteen point two, and sixteen point three, which have been designated as confidential?
I'll move the motion as confidential business, Madam Mayor.
Uh, thank you, councillor Goodrich. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Lancashire. All those in favour? Carried. All right. Could I please have people in the ga- gallery, um, wait in the foyer? Thank you all for attending, and for your interest in tonight's meeting, I declare this meeting closed at eleven oh two.